So we'll have a quorum in a moment. I know, so we'll wait, just in case you're wondering, we're waiting for a quorum to assemble. One of our members had some car trouble, another member is not going to be here this evening, and yet another member, if I had to guess, is probably walking up the steps right now. So if you all will just patiently wait, we will, we, well, we have a quorum. So, okay, we have a quorum now, so, okay, so good. So then I will, we can commence with, I'm gonna have a couple of fast announcements. In the words of Robert Hunter, summertime's on, come and gone, my oh my. And so now we are in the full, the full force of the fall. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. I did want to make a couple of announcements. The, please remember that we have not been, and we will not accept documents at the table during the work sessions for the purpose of considering them. If you want us to consider something in the work session, you need to deliver it to the planning board office on Friday, Wednesday, thank you, Wednesday prior to the meetings. So bear that in mind. Also, in the past, it has been my policy since I've been the chair to restrict public comment to neighbors of projects and do not have counsel speaking. I am announcing tonight that that policy is changing. And counsel will be permitted to speak at work sessions. Now, I want to emphasize two things. First of all, a work session is not a public hearing. It's not a time for the public, including counsel, to come before us and comment on a project that has been approved for a public hearing. There's a resolution that's passed, and we schedule it for public hearing, and then folks can come and speak, and are encouraged to. But we have, in the past, allowed members of the public to speak at work sessions briefly, and in my view, for the purpose of advising us about really environmental issues about which the planning board may not be aware. For instance, a traffic condition, or a prevailing weather condition, or something that you, as a member of the public, knowing about it, might think it's a good idea for the planning board to know about. And as I say, in the past, I haven't permitted counsel to speak for a variety of reasons. I'm changing that, and I'm going to allow, to the extent that it doesn't become an unwieldy mess, public comment by all concerned at work sessions, but that comment is to be limited to two minutes. And I've got two cell phones and a watch with a timer on it, and I intend to enforce that two-minute rule. So with that, again, and the lawyers in the room will appreciate if I, there's a few here, if I say, how many times do you ever want a case of oral argument? Okay? So, but that's just between us. No, but seriously, you're welcome to speak on behalf of clients, as would any other member of the public. With that, one last quick announcement. We are going to change the batting order slightly tonight and allow below the bridge to be the first matter that we cover. Kathy is the, Kathy Cunningham, who is on her way here, is the member of the town board with responsibility for that project, and hopefully she'll get here in time to be able to speak. But Eric, why don't you take over?
Sure. There were two issues at the time of last review. You wanted the town engineer to talk about circulation. He is here to answer any questions that you have, onsite circulation, that is, between the parking spaces and the aisle. And then you had asked for a revised landscaping plan, which showed the areas of naturally occurring vegetation. The last meeting was August 14th. We have not received either of those items. So again, Tom Tommidge is here. If you have questions about the memorandum that he prepared dated September 11th, where he reviews the onsite circulation, but it appears, based on the planning board's last post-meeting memo, that those two outstanding items, they're, well, they're still outstanding.
And, you know, I apologize, I'm gonna, I missed one other thing. We have on the, and I'm glad you're here to hear this, we have on the plate tonight the draft scoping for the Springs Fireplace car study. And if anybody's here, again, wishing to comment on that, you should know that tonight we're not going to discuss it at length. We're going to reserve that for next week when we have what looks to be a slightly less heavy agenda, and it's really more for the purpose of letting the board members know to be ready next week when we do speak about it. I know that some of our members have been, or at least one of them, has been on top of this already, but we're not all there. So, so if anyone's here on that, just to let you know, you could, we won't really be doing it very deeply. Again, I'm sorry to go off the flow. Eric?
That's it, so it appears that the application is still incomplete. However, you might want to discuss what Tom wrote in his memo, and whether or not you feel that the landscaping plan needs to be revised prior to scheduling this for a public hearing, because all of the other issues have been resolved, except for those two that I just outlined.
And again, we're moving this matter to the top of the plate because...
And I shouldn't, I shouldn't say all the issues have been resolved, but all of the items that they need to get a complete application and get to a public hearing.
And the, the last time, those two items were Tom's comments on the flow and also a landscaping detail.
Correct.
So, Tom, if you will, if you want to take us through your analysis?
Sure. It's not a very long memo, but I was asked to look at the paddocks and the access lane to see if they were sufficient for traffic, you know, trucks, different trucks. So Mr. Rhodes, engineer for the applicant, was in my office, and he was showing me his drawing. His drawing was completed by a program that did turning radiuses and things like that. Now, we came to a couple of conclusions, is that every paddock did not have good access, but the majority of them did. Likely, some vehicles are 40 feet in long, they had some very few restrictions, and required a three-point turn. Now, I didn't say that they all had to be three, large trucks, but I think it was something like two or three out of the whole, you know, and they could jockey those around. You know, you're gonna have a 10-wheeler with a trailer, adjust it in the field. We also looked at landscaping trucks with a trailer, and we thought that they turn out, would turn out to be okay. And then we have a lot of mowing trucks, trucks with the mowing equipment behind this, that they, that they're pulling, and that seemed to be okay. We also looked at a pedestrian vehicle, also with a pickup truck, and the, every place we tried that, it worked okay. So there's a majority of, I would say, truck trailers satisfied, I think, what we were looking for. There was a couple of assumptions. One was the, that the accessway would be free of vehicles, and vehicles not, they're supposed to be in the paddocks, but if they were in the access aisle, they needed to be moved. I asked for David Rhodes's map, and he said he was going to submit it to me the next day, and we had gone through it like I do with a lot of applications, make this correction, change this, this is what I'd like to see, this is what I'd like to have. Nothing of substance, a little more clarity, nothing of substantial that you might need. But the next morning, the next day, came, and they didn't submit anything. And I think that seems to be a little consensus tonight, but as far as I'm concerned, is there's access to this property.
Now, let me ask a question. Was there anything that you looked at besides this doc, what would you characterize it as, a map, a graph, or what exactly, this thing?
I wasn't ready for that.
Diagram?
Diagram.
Diagram, okay.
I think it was an AutoCAD program, right?
I don't know if it was AutoCAD, or if it was a different application.
Was it a computer program?
It was a computer program.
And so what, it was set up on a laptop or something, or on your own?
Well, no, no, he had printed, he had printed with the information on it, and from a computer, and he put it in on a plan. The plan was approximately 30 by 36. It was a fairly big, good-sized plan.
Oh, he laid it out on?
Yeah, he had it out on my desk, and...
Is he gonna sign and seal this plan?
If he doesn't submit it, I don't think he'll sign and seal it.
But he's a licensed engineer?
Yes, he is a licensed engineer, and he can certainly do that.
Was there anything else that you relied on to reach the conclusion, and I presume it's the conclusion, in your, in your September 11th memo?
Well, based on my experience as a town engineer, and knowing that the old-fashioned way, we open up a textbook to determine if you had turning radius, it just, like many things, when we have a computer program, it's quite often, it's just easier to do that. If we were doing a beam calculation for a house, you would use a computer, and you'd use a program that's designed for that, and that's what he had. He had a computer that, not a computer, but a design that, that...
Computer-generated?
That generated these things. Now, you know, a lot of things, you, we say 40-foot-long truck, for example, maybe a 39 or 38 truck. We didn't, we have to pick and choose which ones we're going to look at. Certainly, I didn't look at a 38-foot-long truck, I had 40 feet. So with a 40-foot restriction, we would probably have a few trucks that would need a three-point turn. But the 38s may not be a problem, so...
What I'm interested in understanding, though, is, since you don't have this document,
I did it all from memory.
I'm sorry?
I came to my conclusions mostly from that drawing, and based on that drawing, I put my thoughts on paper here.
But would it be accurate to say that you would not have reached the conclusions you reached without having seen?
I think I would come to the same conclusions.
You would?
I think so. It would've just taken me longer to do it.
Based on what?
You would open up a textbook, and you have turning radiuses for a 30-foot combination truck, et cetera, et cetera. You'd have to look at these. It would take, you know, many hours.
Okay. And was there anything else that you might have looked at? Any other plans, schematics, before and after the paddock sizes were changed?
I'll tell you, I can think of. If you had any more questions, I certainly would answer those.
What about the drainage, drainage site?
It was all, the whole site is contained. That's the first thing. So it's two-intrained full design. I can't, I don't remember exactly. I think there was some down here. I'm not quite sure. I'd have to look at the drawing a little bit longer. But I do, it was, it was looked at by me, and it was self-contained. It's not going off-site.
This is the computer-generated?
No, this is the drainage.
The drainage, I'm sorry.
Randy asked me to, did I take a look at the drainage? And the answer was yes, I took a look at it, and it contained the drain, stormwater on-site.
Does anyone else have any questions for Tom right now? Does the applicant want to be heard on this?
Hi, John Tarbit for the applicant. So, just to back up, the landscaping plan was approved, like, not approved, but the board had discussed the landscaping plan as far back as 17 months ago. At a number of work sessions, it's been discussed again, and the board has reached a consensus that the landscape plan was acceptable. At the last work session, there was a, so the surveys you guys all have is a SASCA survey, and the SASCA survey shows the property 100% cleared. It hasn't changed since 2014, when we originally submitted the application. So over the last five years, it's been the same survey, 100% cleared. At the last work session, someone said, I think there might be a couple of trees on the property. And we said, we don't think they are, they're probably, the trees that are there probably are in the town's right-of-way, near, closer to the road, and our survey shows it 100% cleared. But we said, to the extent there's any oak trees on the property, we'd be more than happy to agree to keep them. There was nothing, and there was a consensus reached that we would not have to revise, and I was very, the last time I was here, which was two months ago now, eight weeks ago, we were very keen on being deemed complete, because again, we've been at this five years. And I really didn't want to have to come back for another work session, so I said, look, you know, and there was, the board discussed the application, and they agreed that we would not have to revise our landscaping plan, that we could just somehow in the future agree to not cut down any oak trees. That's all, you don't have to trust me, you can just watch the tape from, from August. So to be discussing the landscaping plan again tonight, approximately 13 to 14 months after it was first deemed acceptable by the board, it's somewhat frustrating. We're hoping that the board can see, see it move past that issue at this point. And if there are any oak trees, again, we're happy to keep them, but the survey shows the property 100% cleared. And of course, it's a CI property, so...
All right, I mean, look, the landscaping, according to the memo, the planning board, the planning department memo, at the time of the last review, the board had requested a revised landscaping plan, which illustrated the remaining areas of naturally occurring vegetation. This information is still pending as of the date of this motion.
Right, so two things. One is, the survey shows the property 100% cleared, so I don't have to tell you about that. The second thing is, the planning department memo is not what happened at, just watch the tape. We don't need to argue about it. Anybody here can just watch the tape and see that there was a consensus reached last time that, hey, look, if there's a tree on the property, we'll agree to keep it. But the survey says 100% cleared.
But just to clarify, as the applicant did submit a landscape plan, because that was discussed with the applicant.
Sure, the landscaping plan that has previously been deemed acceptable by the board, many, many times, you have a landscape plan, there's over 400 trees to, or bushes, sorry, not trees, that are proposed to be planted on the property. That's all been reviewed many, many times. If you remember, we spent over two hours doing your NAG-deck on this, on this project. The board was very familiar with the landscaping plan, and has repeatedly said that, through a consensus, that the plan was acceptable. So it's a surprise to see it brought up again, but we'd ask the board to move past that.
Thank you.
Do we have the landscape plan on?
Sure.
Okay.
Would you like to see it?
Sure, yeah.
This was Eric's comments at the last meeting, where that there, and he can repeat them, I guess, was that there's just one area that he believed there is natural vegetation. Currently, the landscape plans show it proposed landscaped, so that perhaps they can, you can rectify that with the applicant. Either, however we decide, it could, this, you know, I believe that the board could work through that now or later.
Yeah, and we're not talking about significant tracts of existing trees. It looked, just based on the aerial, that there was maybe a slight patch over by Springs Fireplace Road. We want to keep any existing mature forest, even if it's a small portion, rather than cut it and add landscaping in. But it's not a huge issue, and provided the applicants are okay with a condition of approval, that they would leave any areas of existing naturally occurring vegetation as a condition of approval, I think that that's fine. And then additionally, I can take a closer look at it and mark any such areas, and, you know, I think we can work on that. It's not a major issue for this application.
I think I may have just, when I was sitting there thinking, I, I think that the discrepancy is that when surveyors say something's 100% cleared, they don't mean there's no trees on it, they're using the town code's definition, right? Which is that if you have oak trees on a property, and a lawn underneath that, then that is, the town would consider that a cleared area. So I think that's what the survey, when the surveyor says the property's 100% cleared, there may in fact be a few trees up here, but understandably, below those trees is Russian olive, and it's full of invasive species. We intend to put a nice native landscaping plan in there, which is what you have seen. So to the extent we want, there is no native forest on this property, there may be a few oak trees, we're happy to keep the oak trees, but to say, keep the Russian olives, seems counterintuitive to what we're trying to do. We're trying to plant a nice, you have the plan, it's a beautiful plan. The owners are big gardeners and native people, so to say, hey, keep the Russian olive, and don't put native trees in there, seems counterintuitive to me. Again, you've, you've reviewed the plan many times, you've reached a consensus on it many times. If the oak tree, if you want to keep the oak trees, we're happy to keep the oak trees. We plan on doing that anyway, if there, if there are any. But I think that's what's going on.
Very well. So the, again, this is Kathy's project, unfortunately, traffic and cars issue, she had, it's keeping up on here, but being there. But I do know that, well, did you want to continue on this?
Sure, I can jump to the next thing.
Why don't you do that?
Okay. Yeah, sure. So the second issue is, is internal circulation for our owned cars, right? I don't think anybody is suggesting that there could ever be an issue on Springs Fireplace Road. What we're talking about is whether a 40-foot truck, which, that's the ladder truck for the fire department for East Hampton, right? I mean, that's it, that's not what's going to be on this property, ever. But when an engineer does worst-case examples, I guess a 40-foot truck is probably the worst you could possibly think of. A 40-foot truck couldn't turn on any property, with the exception of maybe this one, anywhere in town, any commercial property. They, it's just, I couldn't think of any, you guys may have, you may be able to think of one. I can't think of any property where a 40-foot truck can make an uninterrupted turn. Of course, the landscaping trucks would have no problem, because these are very wide roads. So again, the, I went back through all of our memos, just because I remembered, it was, it was June of 2018, when internal traffic circulation was first signed off on by the board, through a consensus. So 16 to 17 months ago, you had looked at internal traffic circulation and decided that it was fine. At each subsequent work session, it was brought up again by the planning department, because they do have some concerns, that they've made very clear in their memos, that they, even though you had reached a consensus that you were fine with the internal traffic circulation, they wanted you to look at it again. And you did look at, at each and every subsequent planning board work session for 17 months, including when you did the NAG-deck, and found that there would not be any traffic circulation issues. It was brought up again in August, because we had gone for a zoning board variance, which you may or may not remember, we did not get the variance. So as a result of not getting the variance, we had to make the pens smaller. And someone said, and you pointed out, it was counterintuitive, but somebody said, well, if you make the pen smaller, maybe we need to look at traffic, internal traffic again. And we, we said that's counterintuitive, because smaller pens don't, the road is a road, we're not changing the road. It was a whole big discussion, and then someone said, well, would you be willing to go back and ask our town engineer, who has many times looked at this application in the past, to confirm that one thing? Does smaller pens impact traffic circulation? And he has now answered the question that, in fact, smaller pens will not, it's right, the first paragraph of his memo says, in fact, smaller pens will not impact traffic circulation. So now, 17 months after first agreed that internal traffic circulation was acceptable to the board, your, your town engineer has now signed off on that. He is telling you, as a licensed engineer, he agrees with our licensed engineer, that internal traffic circulation is not a problem. So what we're asking for, and if you look, there's many previous memos where the planning department has said, it appears the application is deemed, is should be ready, and is complete and ready for public hearing. Many, many previous memos have said that. We're asking that finally, at this, tonight, you deem the application complete and move to a works, a public hearing.
And just, with respect to why the issue came up again, I mean, you just said that you went through the ZBA and didn't get the variance and that, and you changed the size of the pens. So that's, I think, a fairly substantial change to the project itself, and, you know, if the board thought that maybe we should have another, have the engineer, town engineer take another look at it, I don't think that that's, you know, an unreasonable ask.
So that's where we're at in August, and I saw your argument in August, and I really want to be deemed complete, so what I said was, if he signs off on it, if he says that he, as a licensed engineer, has no issue with, or doesn't think that actually the smaller pens can impact the circulation, can we not have another work session? Can we just move to, and we had agreed, and the board had reached a consensus that night in August, that if, in fact, he had done that. So then, it's somewhat frustrating to the applicant and me to be here eight weeks later discussing the same two things we discussed for 17 straight months.
But now, moving into, and again, this will be among the board, you'll be able to comment later on this, this is not necessarily directed at you, but it's for the board's consideration, and again, I'm doing this in the absence of Kathy. The, Tom's report says, furthermore, I had the benefit of viewing a drawing prepared by David Rhodes P.E. The drawings are prepared, are prepared using a program to calculate turning access points. Although it has not been submitted to either the planning board or to myself, I recommend the board request this drawing to include in their consideration of this application. And so that is an issue which we need to address as a planning board tonight, because the town engineer's recommendation, that we request that the drawing be included in their consideration of the application. So we heard from the town engineer, and I guess the thing to do is, I'll throw it up to the board, throw it open to the board, and I think the last time I started was Sharon, so, Ed, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I actually, I think we should have a copy of David Rhodes', you know, CAD file, or whatever it is, in the record, submitted to the record, signed by him. I would like to see that in the record. But, you know, but honestly, I think that, you know, Tom's evaluation of that is sort of adequate for us to perhaps condition this on receiving that at some point before a public hearing. I think the landscape question is, you know, I think if Eric and John can work together on this and figure out where there might be some naturally occurring vegetation, great.
I think we disagree, right? No, I think we both agreed, we want to keep the oak trees, right? You would want to keep Russian olive.
John, let's, let's keep it among us, and then we can throw it back to you.
Okay.
You know, I think otherwise, this is ready to go to public hearing.
Lou?
Yeah, on the vegetation issue, I agree with what Ed just said. I think it's something that they could work out, so I have no problem with that. On the turning radius, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something here, and I think I said this the last time, and I'll try to use an analogy this time. I don't think that's, I think that's an issue, if it was a problem, that would be your problem, because then you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to offer the product that would sell, that people would want to use. If they can't maneuver inside there, they're not going to rent those stalls. It's like a supermarket...
That's the analogy I've been thinking of.
It's like a supermarket having aisles, that you can't, you can't push the cart down. I mean...
That's right.
That, that, that would only hurt the supermarket. Customers would just not go. So I, you know, I think we've gone over this exhaustively. Tom has taken a look at it with the computer program. I really don't think it's an issue. I think it's ready to go, as long as that landscaping issue can be worked out, and it looks like it can.
Thanks. Ian?
Yeah, I think we're ready for public hearing. I'm with Lou on that. I don't think shrinking the pens affects the flow outside of the pens. In fact, it, it allows for smaller trucks to be in the pen, which might, you know, therefore lead to less problems outside, because there's smaller vehicles moving around. You know, if, if, if Tom really wants to see this drawing submitted, I would, would condition it, but it's not something we normally require. I believe these are 50-foot roadways, which are huge, but, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I know that 50-foot access roads are very, very large, and can, can handle lots of equipment. So like Lou said, if somehow people abuse that space by misusing it, I, you know, I don't think that that's a flaw with, with the plan, it's with how it's managed after the fact, and, and I'm comfortable. So with respect to the landscaping plan, I, I agree that, that if there are oak trees that you want to keep, and the planning department sees that as a benefit, absolutely. The rest of your landscaping plan, as you said, we've looked at, and I'm comfortable with. So I think we're ready for public hearing.
Randy? Thank you.
So, Tom, this is, again, going back to the engineer, this is a special groundwater protection area, and Suffolk County Pine Barrens. So what would we, would we normally require anything extra on the drainage, any filtration from the parking into the drainage system?
Normally, we wouldn't require anything, however, some applications, but I think it has to be, it has to be definitely a filter, unless, I can't remember if it's the application, or Tom, you remember?
I don't think they did.
Tom, you should probably come up for LTV.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're on TV.
We're on TV. Do we do anything extra, is what you asked?
Yeah.
And I was asking John if he was submitting something to this, this problem, this application, because I've seen on other applications where we put a filter fabric above the grate, the drainage grate. That is, that's extra, and we haven't done too many of those.
Did we? Do we?
But it is something I think we might see in the future.
In, in the, uh, in, especially in these areas. I know we have the, we have the floor specs.
They're on the plans.
Oh, they are? Okay, great.
Yeah, I thought they might have been.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and don't forget, we got a two-inch rainfall design, which is nearly a hundred percent. That means on a night like today, you get two inches of rain before the next rainfall comes through.
Okay.
And that's, that's quite a bit of water.
Okay, great.
And we might get that tonight. I'm not going out and taking a look.
Okay.
I rely on the fork, the radar, uh, not radar, the, the weatherman, to tell us how much rain we got.
Okay, all right. Uh, the other, uh, suggestion I have is, uh, there's a lot of people in the, that are interested in the Springs corridor, and the beautification, et cetera. And I wondered if at the public hearing, it'd be possible to have some elevations of the landscaping from, especially from Fireplace Road. I would just ask that the applicant consider, in, in their own interest, really, showing the landscaping in, in, uh, an elevation drawing. Shouldn't be too hard to do. Um, I remain concerned about, uh, traffic, and the Town Board is going ahead with a, uh, traffic study of this whole area for traffic circulation. I don't know what we're going to do if they come up with ideas that affect already-approved maps, but there really aren't that many, um, options for access here. So, I'm, I'm okay with a public hearing and, at this point.
Okay. Um, as for myself, the, the landscaping issues, I'm sure it can be worked out between the applicant and the Planning Department. I'm not concerned about those. The issue is, uh, the pertinent issue, as I see it, is the, uh, the recommendation to include, uh, the drawing that, uh, David Rhodes provided, and that, uh, town engineer used. And based on what I heard, uh, the town engineer say tonight, it sounds like it was more of an aid in the calculation of the, uh, uh, clearances, is the correct word, uh, and that it wasn't the determining factor. Uh, I agree with Ed's analysis that it would be a good idea for it to be in the, uh, public record, because it was something that was, was used. But again, it doesn't sound like it was the thing on which the decision was made. And Tom, if I have that wrong, please tell me.
No, you, I think you're, uh, you're correct. I would use the word tool.
Tool, fine.
Okay, I use, I use a program like this as a tool. And then you use your training, your education to evaluate, see if you get, um, anything else.
Did I almost hear of anything else? Did that on the last sentence you were going to say?
Do you want me to say it on?
Yeah, why not?
None of us like to talk on the, on the podium. Um, we were talking about the, the plan, okay?
Right.
That it didn't get submitted.
Right.
I think I use that more as a tool, instead of, you know, like I use, would use a book as a reference. Okay, now we have computers, and we have programs, which, uh, gives us a lot of stuff. But you got to remember, at the end of the day, you've got to make sure it seems reasonable. Otherwise, garbage, garbage in, garbage out. You've heard that about programs. So, this was used as a tool. We were at a desk, we were talking engineer to engineer, and, uh, I looked at it, and it seemed reasonable. And the program seemed reasonable. I don't have that copy of a program.
Hi, Kathy.
Sorry to be so late.
Quiet, all right? I'm sorry I didn't get your call.
It's all right. Flat tires happen to everyone, I guess. Just inconvenient for me tonight.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, everyone.
Hi.
Tom, thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
I'm soaking wet.
Why don't you take a breath and, uh, catch up?
Yes.
Tom was, we, we've gone through the, uh, the consensus of the board.
Okay.
And I think it's safe to say that the landscaping issue doesn't appear to be an issue
Right.
with any of us.
Sorry.
Uh, and that it could be worked out between the applicant and the Planning Department.
That's okay, it's fine.
And that is, insofar as the, um, the, uh, David Rhodes report is concerned.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just commented that I was the last among us to comment, uh, that I had adopted Ed's suggestion that it be included in the record. Uh, but, uh, Tom was just talking about whether it was the determining factor in, uh, and, and he, I think, was describing it more as a tool in reaching the conclusion that, uh, that, that there was no issue, uh, with turning inside. And I should add, that my own view of this is, we're talking, and, and it's been made, the comment's been made, we're talking about inside the, uh, the applicant, uh, the applicant's property. We're not talking about the impacts that might be outside the applicant's property. That's a whole different conversation. That's not what Tom was asked to talk about. And, uh, so, if you have anything that you want to add, this is a
That's the time.
Last, rare chance, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, well, um, I, I made the point earlier, and, and, uh, Mr. Tarbent knows this. I just think it's useful for us to memorialize any memos with drawings when they're available. And when Tom made the recommendation in his memo that we should ask for it, it seemed useful to me. Um, one of the problems that we have is, um, as we go back in the file, as we go, you know, as we go forward in time, this is a use that has not, it's not part of the code. We're sort of hacking our way through this. Um, the applicant is trying to legalize this, um, use on this property, and that's all great. You know, we're all happy about that. But, um, I just think it's useful to have the, have the drawing. If the drawing helped him to get to a certain conclusion, it felt to me useful. But if that's not what the rest of the group thinks, I'm unvote, I get it. I went to the site today, and some of the pens are already, um, built. And I did drive around, and I am, uh, you know, reassured by the physical space as I drove around it, that it's, I mean, of course, I don't know what it's like to drive an E.T., you know, some of the sizes of these trucks that are going to go in there, and that's where the turning radius and so forth may be relevant. But it seemed adequate to me. I, it didn't feel, um, tight, at least i- in the way that I, because I think I was one of the ones that anticipated that, uh, shrinking the rear, um, of the pen, you know, five or ten feet, and whatever instances those were, that that would somehow, it was counterintuitive to me that you would have as much, you know, uh, room to park and to turn, uh, when the pens were made smaller. But they, it, you know, there were big machines there today, moving a lot of stuff around. And, um, I mean, I'm, I know it's not in its final stage by any means, but some of the pens were, um, partitioned with fencing, and it looked like it might work. So, I'm not opposed to, uh, proceeding to the public hearing. I would just like to see this drawing in the file. But if we have, uh, you know, if that's not what the board wants, then that's okay with me.
Well, we can come to that conclusion, I guess, down the road. We don't commit that decision.
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just make a vote, if we're making a condition, we know tonight whether we want to or not, right? I mean, I don't see why we would wait on that choice.
Well, that's, I mean.
We'd like to have it, I think, in, in the file stamped and signed before the date of the hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I.
I mean, I, I.
I don't, I, I would don't think we need it.
I don't think we need it, because the way I understand it is, as Tom says, it's a tool. It's not, it's not evidence of, the evidence that we required was Tom's expertise, which he gave us in the letter. He used this tool to arrive at that conclusion. Uh, so, if he used the calculator or an Excel spreadsheet to arrive at some answer that he needed to arrive at, we wouldn't ask for that. Uh, so, I, that's the reason why I don't think it's.
So, your vote is now?
My vote is now.
Yeah, well, I just wanted, one, one quick point about Lou, you saying that it's really their problem, because it's on-site. But if their circulation doesn't work well, and, and the people coming in in the morning end up, uh, making a queue along the shoulder of Fireplace Road, then it becomes not just their problem. So, I think that's one reason we want, we want their engineer, who's opined and provided this drawing, to stamp and sign it for the hearing.
Well, actually, I don't know if the, their engineer has opined, our engineer has opined.
Okay.
For our purposes.
Yeah.
And the question is, what was that opinion based on?
Mm-hmm.
And what I heard.
Yeah, correct.
And what I heard was that it was based on his overall knowledge with thirty-plus years as an engineer,
Mm-hmm.
of coming to this conclusion, and, uh, the, uh, David Rhodes', uh, CAD, or whatever it was, uh, was a tool. And, uh, I, I know I said before that I agree with Ed, but I think I may be leaning towards Lou's.
Well, it's, it's, it's everything, don't forget. It's the tool, it's your, your desk, your equipment, your computer, your Excel program. Um, all of this is used in your experience. Uh, don't underestimate, uh, you know, garbage in, garbage out. Make sure that that is what you're looking for. Um, yes, do we rely on computer programs? Absolutely. Um, but, uh, I don't think we look at that any more or less than all the other equip.
But Tom, you, you, I'm sorry. You said that if this tool wasn't available to you.
I would use other.
You would have been able to arrive at this conclusion. It just would have taken you many, many hours longer. You would have had to do it by hand, or some other method that you employ. So, again.
I mean, I, I mean, you said, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, he, I'm.
You, did you say, "That's right"?
Oh, yes, I did say that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that was his, that was his testimony. So, again, we're, we're counting on Tom's expertise. How he arrived at that expertise, I don't think is in question here, or it should be made part of the record. I think it's enough for us to get his letter saying that he agrees there's plenty of maneuvering space. That's my opinion.
Listen, the drawing is done. You know, what's the big deal about getting it and adding it as part of the record? I think, you know, we just need to take a vote on it. Okay?
One, one other thing is, and one other thought is, that if we require this now, going forward, if there's any time in the future, that the town engineer, or any engineer whose report we might rely on, uh, mentions this, this kind of a thing, a CAD, will we require it then?
Well, when our town engineer recommends, I'm just quoting his memo, "I recommend the board request this drawing to include in their consideration of this application."
And the reason I wrote that is because I felt that it belonged in the file. Yeah, that's why.
And you still feel that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Me too.
That just makes sense. All right, shall we have a?
Can I speak that quick?
Yeah, why don't you?
So, the reason why, um, we did not submit the map is it's a worst-case scenario map, right? It's a forty-foot truck. We're not bringing forty-foot trucks on this property. And what we were worried about was someone saying, "Well, you can't, you can't turn a four, a forty-foot truck on, on these fifty-foot wide roads." And, of course, you can't. That's correct. I, I don't, it's a very misleading map. It was, it was meant, from engineer to engineer, to discuss worst-case scenarios. Sort of like your grocery store example. What if a hundred people came in at once? Would you have enough registers? No, you wouldn't. I can tell you, we don't have enough room to turn a forty-foot truck in a, on a fifty-foot wide road.
Yeah, it says, yeah, too.
We just want this as evidence, and the, we're not basing a decision on.
How do I stop you, how do, and I don't, I mean, this, I mean, this all due respect, but how do I stop you from saying, "Oh, well, now we have this memo, we have to have a work session to discuss"?
Well, actually, no, you're hearing it right now. See, that.
You can, you can go back. You're saying you'll go to, how do I know for sure that we're not going to be discussing traffic circulation?
We've seen it, we've seen what this has to say already. We're just asking for a sign.
To include it in the record.
When I submit this, right, how do I know that I don't get a memo from the Plan Department saying that there needs to be a work session to discuss the new map that was submitted?
Because the reason.
We're telling you that.
Well, more than just we're telling you that.
Seventeen months ago, you told me we were complete.
John, the reason.
You didn't get a variance.
That's right.
Traffic circulation was deemed, many times, including after the variance application, when you did the neg deck.
The reason you know, look, nothing is a hundred percent certain.
I know. That's why I don't want to.
But, and, and I appreciate that worry that, you know, the, the minor possibility, um, that, you know, there could be a re, retraction, if you will. But, but.
I can't submit it on that.
Let me, let me, let me just say this. Let me say this. John, your concern was, as I understood it, that.
Guarantee me we're going to have a work public hearing.
John, please. Your concern was that the application would not be deemed complete without it. We are deeming it complete.
No, it was supposed to be, in August, you agreed it would be deemed complete if Tom, in August, this board, by consensus vote, agreed that if Tom sent the smaller pens.
There's no such thing as consensus vote.
John, I think the issue is.
Vote, or there's consensus.
So, that's why I won't submit the map, because you're telling me that we're going to have a public hearing. But now you've submitted the map.
Then we'll deem it incomplete.
That's fine. You're never going to get any more information. I mean, zero. This is it. You want this bill, you make a vote.
You're, John, you want us to schedule this for a public hearing.
I think you have enough information to schedule.
Okay, and, and we're agreeing that we will schedule it for a public hearing.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, I presume, it sounds, to me, like everybody at the table wants to schedule for a public hearing. But we're also saying, put this in the record. So, this is kind of like, you're getting what you want, why is there an issue?
Because it's a misleading map. We never asked our engineer.
But, but, if it's a misleading map, then, and it's something that the town engineer has just said that he thinks that it should be in the public record, then it'll be in the public record, and we will deal with it.
You can make whatever votes you want, but tonight.
But, I, let me put it this way. We're going to vote, and, and based on what I, John, I, it appears that we're going to vote to put, to have a public hearing.
Yep.
I don't know what there is to complain about.
Okay.
After that.
Maybe they can't deliver the map stamped and signed.
Is that an issue?
I wouldn't know. We never, this is, we, we had no idea this map existed. We didn't ask for it, we didn't pay for it. We have to, we never had to go pay, I don't.
Well, it was presented by your engineer to, to the town engineer.
They went, he went there, yeah, I guess.
Well, it.
I don't know what it cost to have this map produced.
Well, but couldn't it just be the, couldn't it just be the diagram? I mean, i- if it, even if it is Dan's note.
Apparently, I just found out tonight, it's a ten-vice, it's a very big map. I didn't, I, I never knew. I noticed, I have, I've seen a PDF of this.
Right.
Uh, I, I never saw, I never saw it.
Right. I mean, you know, just speaking for myself, I, I would like to move this to public hearing. It, you know, it's been going on for a long time. Um, uh, I think that part of the reason we've been as cautious as we have is because this is an unregulated use. It's happening, um, anyway. You know, we don't have a lot of standards for it. We approved your original site plan that was, you know, and you, the, uh, area variances were denied. You know, we'd like to, and, and it looks, it looks good. I was there today. It's much better, you know? I mean, that was the goal. We were all hoping, you know, clean up the site, and.
It got shaved and.
Yeah, and, and I, I had videos, if, but I didn't get a chance to show anybody, because I had a flat tire.
By the way, this site was developed pre nineteen eighty-four, right? This is not a new use. It's been, it's been going on for.
Right.
Well, I think, but what we should.
We just, I just want to, I just want to say to you that I think, you know, we just want to have the picture that these words are attached to, on, on the advice of our engineer, and it just makes sense to me. Because we have other, we'll be having other applications like this. I think having, uh, you know, building a, uh, uh, some, this vault of knowledge about how these, you know, parking areas are going to work, and the varying, um, influences and the engineering that affects them is useful for everybody. And it'd certainly be helpful for the public, I think. Be helpful for me.
So, we should probably have two votes. One is to include the, uh, the drawing, I'm shortening it, uh, prior to the public hearing. It had to be submitted to the record prior to the public hearing. So, if I can get a, 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 a motion on that. And then we'll have a simple motion on whether to move it to a public hearing. Or should we do it the other way?
Like your, your way is good.
Well, no, but isn't it, isn't it, we're ready to schedule it for a public hearing? The only question is whether we condition that public hearing on having this map?
Yeah, but we're not going to schedule it if there's a vote that requires the map. In other words, if the map, if we vote to require the map, and the map isn't produced, then we have an issue at the hearing. I know, I don't know how we're going to.
The US Council.
Handle that.
What do you, can I get your, your in, input on this, Janison?
We could go ahead with the hearing, but.
Yeah, I, I personally, and we've talked about it internally in my office, trying to understand every possible permutation that this could take.
Was this one of them?
Sort of, was that it may be problematic to try and require them to submit something that is not a requirement of the application. They have many things in the file and the record, to my knowledge, that have already spoken to this issue. And there were other maps that were very recent. And there were other maps that were very recently submitted to the file that speak to this very issue of the circulation. And then, and when this question was originally proposed to Tom, it was to look at the most recently submitted plans compared to the original plans that were denied because they required that variance, and it was to compare the two. So, it would be much easier for me if you were not asking this of them. I understand why, and unfortunately for the applicant, it seems that they did not all talk before they went in and they produced this document that was never submitted to the file.
Can I, can I use another analogy to make my point as to whether, as to why we don't really need this? Is if we were approving a parking lot and, and they submitted a plan and they gave the dimensions of each parking space and the turning ratios in the aisles of those parking spaces? And somebody used a, some kind of computer program to determine how, how wide the turning aisle should be? Would we request that program to be part of the file as long as we have the dimensions that work?
We have specs for parking lots.
Yeah, and we have specs.
We don't have specs for.
For this.
We don't have specs.
You do, I think. You don't, so I just watched the last meeting, which was two months ago, the October, I mean, the August fourteenth, and there was a document that spoke to this, right? And we.
The, the applicant submitted a sample circulation diagram, which I do have on here. This is not the same document that, that Tom was referring to, but this was submitted by the applicant prior to the last meeting.
But this is in a spec from the code, is it our code? See, our parking requirements are in our town code for normal parking lots.
Right.
And this is a fifty-four, though.
I know, I know, I know, but we don't have a set, we don't have a set spec.
Yeah, but my point is that once you determine what the proper dimensions should be, you don't need, you don't need some other device or tool to determine whether those dimensions work.
Well, get the town engineer to change his mind.
Actually, in the past, you have required diagrams when there was a question about whether or not the, the circulation worked.
Is this the diagram? Right? We submitted, you said.
I'm not speaking to that one, I'm just speaking in general.
But you said in the past they've requested diagrams, that's the diagram.
I'm talking about this application, I'm talking about in general.
She means it's a general protocol.
Right. So, and, and just since it mapped up, Springs Fire Place Road is thirty-five wide.
Well, it's, John, in those cases, though, did the town engineer opine on that issue?
The town engineer usually reviews them, yes.
And, and we would have required it where it was approved by the town engineer or the town engineer said that it was sufficient?
You would want the town engineer to, to say that the circulation worked based on the diagrams submitted. I'm just saying that have, asking for a diagram is, is not, even though it's not specifically in the code, is, is not something that's out of your, your realm. You've done that before.
Okay, well.
We're not asking for a diagram. We're asking for a computer program that, that, that comes.
No, we're asking for a drawing.
It's a drawing, it's sincere drawing. Request the drawing to include in your consideration.
Right, the drawing is, is prepared with.
Right, with a particular program that Tom doesn't have, yeah. That satisfies his concerns. I understand that. I, I.
Can I remind the board just to think back? On, on the fourteen, on the last meeting, the question that you were asking Eric to relay to Tom was what? Because that was prior to this illustration created by the computer program ever in existence. So, you were asking him to look at what and compare to what and ask, answer what question?
The circulation in the site plan.
So, at that point.
Because the dimensions of the pens had changed.
No, I understand that, but.
But that's, that's the only reason.
But you were asking him to look at that site plan, that one document.
In other words.
And at that point, if he had not seen this third item that, that, that Rhodes brought in, that is not in the file that we're talking about now, he would have been looking at that one document and answering a question that you all asked of him. So, maybe the que, one question you could ask Tom would be, did he look at that to answer your original question?
He already said, he already commented on that.
That he looked at that, at the site plan?
He looked at David Rhodes' plan.
Well, I'll ask you.
Talking about the.
The site.
I would ask Tom, Tom, does the fact that the pens are now slightly shorter than the previous plan, does that affect circulation in terms of accessing the pens?
Adversely, does not.
Okay. So, I think that he answered our question.
That's, that was the question. And the que, and so the sub, the.
Go sit down then.
Go ahead, don't go too far. The secondary question, then, is do we want to adopt his recommendation? And I think what counsel is saying is that to reach that first question, which he just answered, we don't necessarily need to reach that recommendation.
Except that his, his recommendation includes getting a copy of it.
Right, but, but frankly, we rely on our engineer for engineering advice, which he's given us. He's also saying, you know, you should put this in your file, but that's kind of independent of the engineering elements.
Well, we have them here. Why, Tom, are you, are you comfortable that we don't, if we were not going to have this drawing in the file, that it's a complete file, ready for a public hearing?
I'm, I'm comfortable. I don't know if you're comfortable.
Well, no, I mean.
Well, we're comfortable if you are.
Given that you've said you thought we should get the drawing.
Right.
Is, do you think the files, the, the application's complete, ready for hearing absent?
I think with, with time, I could probably find other tools to evaluate where we're at now, and we come up with the same conclusion.
We don't have time. We come up with, well.
Well, he's, but he's already given us his expert advice, that, that he thinks the engineering elements are okay. He's used his experience. He looked at this thing, he thinks it's okay. So, we, we, we can take that engineering advice, and, and I certainly take it very seriously. What goes into our file is another question entirely, outside of an engineering question.
I'm guided by what counsel just said, and that is that we were asked, we asked of the town engineer one question, and he's given us the answer to that question. I don't think that, Tom, I'm sorry to throw you back, your response is governed by whether or not that document is in the record. Your response that the turning radiuses are satisfactory is not go, is your response, that the turning radiuses, et cetera, are satisfactory, governed by whether or not this document is in the record.
I, I don't think my memo is going to change, or my conclusions, I don't think they're going to change if the applicant does not give you that drawing.
Okay.
I, I was at a, we, all of us, we do a lot of things during, throughout the day. This was a, I don't know, fifteen-second thought with all the other things I did that day, just like you guys do.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
So, I don't think you're going to come up with a different conclusion. I was always taught, in the planning board business, that submit as much information as you can. It's good, it's good, it's good for the, the public, it's good for the applicant, it's good for the town. And that's all I was trying to do, is make your file better than it was.
I was taught that in the lawyer business also, so.
Yeah. I think it's called the truth or something like that.
Now, that, that's a whole other issue. Let, let, let's do the, I think, I think we have enough now that we can have a resolution. We can do the two resolutions. Is that, before we take them, that consensus? Kathy, do you want to do that, or you want me to do that?
I propose that.
First, whether or not the.
Well, is, is the, yeah, is the, does the board feel the file is complete without this memo, this drawing from Rhodes?
Do we need a resolution on that?
A second.
We don't need a resolution.
We get, we get consensus on that?
I think we're just, yeah.
I, I think it's completely out.
I would, however, ask, not making it a condition of scheduling the public hearing, but I would request that you voluntarily submit this for the record.
Once I actually have a public hearing, I'll be much happier. Let's put it that way.
You're looking at a man on the edge of the cliff.
You're not, you're not really hearing us, I don't think.
Which I wonder, obviously, the engineer only asked that we request it, so we're satisfying everything.
Do we have a consensus on that, then? Okay, all right, it's now, now, the, I can do the question more for.
Okay.
I understood as a.
Yeah.
Does the board believe that the application is complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right? Any opposed? Thank you all.
Sorry for taking up everybody's time. Angry.
Just, just know that you were at the front of the list for the engineer's convenience.
Yes, and thanks for.
Yeah, nobody.
Tom, thanks for coming. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, Tom, we appreciate it. We do have a public hearing scheduled for seven thirty, uh, seven, PM, pardon me, seven PM, it is now seven thirty-one.
Okay.
So.
Take notice that a public hearing be held before the East Hampton Town Planning Board at Town Hall, 159 Panigale Road, East Hampton, on Wednesday. October sixteenth, twenty nineteen, at seven PM, or as soon thereafter, as this matter may be heard, to consider the application of Round Swamp Farm Extension Lot Three Site Plan Approval pursuant to Article Six of Chapter Two Fifty-Five of the East Hampton Town Code to change the development of Lots Three from a single-building housing as service commercial use to three buildings. The site plan application was approved in twenty thirteen to develop four lots ranging in size from fifty-seven thousand, seven, one-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet to eighty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-eighteen square feet over the course of five phases. Development of Lot Three was to construct a two-story, eight, two-story, comma, eight-unit, comma, excuse me, twenty, ten thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-square-foot gross floor area is fifteen thousand, three-hundred-and-forty square feet. Service commercial, special permit use, building identified as building number six, along with thirty-five parking spaces, a four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine-square-foot fenced-in gravel outdoor storage area, two dumpsters on concrete slabs with six-foot stockade fencing, drainage, lighting, landscaping, driveways, and access. The property contains eighty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet and is located on the north side of West Drive, East Hampton, and is situated in the Commercial Industrial Zoning District, as shown on the official zoning map of the town of East Hampton, and is identified on Suffolk County Tax Map as parcel three-hundred-dash-one-four-three-dash-one-dash-twelve-point-five. Subject application is classified as an, as an unlisted action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Part Six One Seven of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, and Chapter One Twenty-Eight, Environmental Quality Review of the Town Code. A set of plans prepared by D.B. Bennett, P.E.P.C., dated revised June thirteenth, twenty nineteen, including Site Plan C-One, Sanitary Details, Lot Three C-Two, Civil Site Details, Lot Three C-Three, and a set, it says debt, but set of plans prepared by D.B. Bennett, P.E.P.C., dated revised October thirty, twenty eighteen, including Building One Floor Plan A One Point Zero, Building One Elevations A One Point One, Building One Elevations A One Point Two, Building Two Floor Plan A Two Point One, Zero, excuse me, Building Two Elevations A Two Point One, Building Two A Two Point Two, Building Three A Three Point Zero, Building Three Elevations A Three Point One, and Building Group Elevations A Four are available for inspection at the Planning Board Office, Suite One O Three, Three Hundred, Panigale Place, East Hampton, New York, dated September eleventh, twenty nineteen. Samuel Kramer, Chairman.
Did I say all that? Do we have jurisdiction?
I have reviewed the affidavits, affidavits, and it appears that a notice and posting was proper.
Thank you. This is the property here. It's situated off of Springs Fire Place Road, down West Drive, which I believe actually has been renamed, right? Am I wrong? Tam Bark Trail, I think it is now. It's one of the four lots of the Snyder Commercial Subdivision. As you can see, the sand pit is here. The applicant's proposed three buildings, two for one use, which is a commercial wholesale food prep and bakery, and then a third building, which is a major recreational facility.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to say anything?
It's up to you.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard with respect to this application?
Oh, should I close?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass and carry. Okay, and now, moving right along, we will now go to the Peconic Land Trust Farm Storage Building, and Ian will be recusing himself.
I think.
And add, oh, I apologize. So, we have hold it.
One, two, three, four, yes. Good thing I came.
Yeah.
I'm still out on the road somewhere.
You picked the nicest night of the, the year for a flat tire.
You didn't get that flat tire when you were in, below the bridge, did you?
I, I have a feeling I did, frankly, because I drove right home from there, and it's the last I used the car. And I thought, you know what? And it's a loner, and my car is on, is being repaired, honestly.
Maybe we should reopen.
Oh, he's out of the room now. He won't think it's funny.
Would you rent a bay there?
Yes, you did. I never got, I apologize.
You had reopened the public hearing and held a new hearing on September eleventh. You left the hearing open for two weeks in order for a revised landscaping plan to be submitted based on public comment. The applicants have submitted a revised plan. It includes a total of a hundred and five mature trees to screen the property from the neighbor whose attorney spoke, as well as from Abraham's path in, in two locations here. So, basically, the board should look over the submitted landscaping plan and determine if the public's concerns have been adequately addressed. The applicants did submit a number of pictures here to give visualizations of what the landscaping would look like. So, this is the overall landscaping plan. It's mostly a mixture of oaks and mature red maples, as well as, is that, bayberry as a ground cover. So, this, this is what they had been proposing before at the public hearing. It was just a row of red, red maples here. They've augmented it with all this additional screening. This is a visualization of what it would look like from the neighbor whose attorney spoke at the hearing from, from their property. This is another rendering. That's so much, just the lawn outside of the barn. This would be the, the plantings over in this area. As you can see, this is showing that respective shows existing versus proposed. Again, from the neighbor and park, property to the northeast. An overhead, you can see the, basically, same design there. That's the cultivated fields adjacent to the barn with the additional screening proposed, and that's it.
Thank you very much. The applicant wish to be heard with respect to this? In that case, it is ran, I'm sorry, Kathy, it's yours, I apologize.
Yeah, I think the public's, the public's concerns have been adequately addressed. I want to thank the applicant for being so responsive to the neighbor's concerns. I know this is no small investment. It's, it's a small forest, actually, it seems to me, that's going in there. And I think the application is ready for approval.
Very good. Is there anything to add?
Can anyone show where the Pomeran Path passes through the site? It may not even be through this.
I didn't think it was actually the Pomeran Path. I didn't think it was actually the Pomeran Path, I thought it was a—
Yeah, it's not.
It's not, okay.
Richard Whalen, Attorney for Peconic Land Trust, good evening. Okay, um, the Springs Amaganza Trail comes just outside the northerly fence, between the fence and the neighbor's driveway, the neighbor's driveway is actually on Peconic Land Trust property, and then it swings south along that service road that was out to Town Lane, that's the Springs Amaganza Trail. The Pomeran Path at one point did go through this area, back in nineteen ninety-eight, around that, for the first few years, but it's since been relocated to come in, um, the former Potter property off of, uh, the wooded land at the corner of Abraham's Path and, and Akabonic. When that was acquired by Peconic Land Trust, we rerouted the Pomeran Path to go over there.
So the people using the Springs Amaganza Trail will just sort of walk through these trees, basically?
Um, not even really walk through them, you walk, the, the trail runs along this fence here.
Right.
I mean, I guess at the end, yes, you have to make sure that they don't plant a tree on the trail, and then you come around, and then you basically take the dirt road out, so it shouldn't have any effect on the trail.
Yeah, the, the trail as it's marked really came in from the other side of Abraham's Path, and then basically goes right through the farm, right?
Right, there is a trail that comes in, there's a separate spur trail that comes in off Abraham's Path itself, and joins, I guess, north of the barn, joins the, the Springs Amaganza Trail.
So that, that's my own concern, that we don't obstruct that.
I, I—
Trail link.
Take care of that.
That's your other package, you're—
Is there anything else that anyone needs to, uh, do?
No, I'm good, I recommend that we move.
In that case, the, uh, has the boards, has the public's concerns been adequately addressed?
Yes.
Is it a yes all around, and is the application ready for approval?
Yes.
You'd also have to make a motion to close the hearing, because you did leave it open.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass and carry. Okay, on to the next, fifty-one South Edgemere.
Okay, this is an application to make interior renovations to a—
Give me a second for the rest of the board together.
The rest of the board.
I've got a long trip from the corner.
It's been a— Fifty-one South Edgemere.
Okay, this is an application to make interior renovations to a motel and restaurant, uh, roof changes, reconfiguration of an entrance, and remove an exterior bar and concrete patio, and add outdoor showers. The parcel is currently improved with a sixteen-unit motel and two-hundred-seat restaurant, its own B residence and within H pod, and this is a type-two action. Uh, they've submitted a seating chart, which conforms to the previous site plan, uh, and CO, uh, the parking matches the previous approval, but we need calculations and numbered spots, uh, we need one complete site plan with all the required information. Uh, this will need an NRSP due to proximity to Fort Pond, an updated wetland flagging should be submitted, uh, will require a project limiting fencing and sediment control, and we also recommend, uh, dry wells to catch the roof runoff. I have some photos, uh, taken the other day. This is the exterior bar to be removed. Uh, this is the entrance way that's going to be altered. Also here, they're proposing some potted plants and to remove those steps. Um, this is the front of the motel, uh, building, they would have outdoor showers here, which I'll mention later. Uh, this is that concrete, small concrete patio to the rear that they'd be removing, but this is what I'm getting at, with the dry wells, currently the roof runoff, uh, from the entire building, both the motel and restaurant, uh, goes downhill into Fort Pond, it's not controlled by any drainage control structures. We'd like to see one or more dry wells, preferably with, uh, filtering, uh, in them, to control runoff. Um, they mentioned that the outdoor showers are going to go into the existing sanitary system, but we don't have any details on that. Uh, their existing sanitary system, uh, the earliest record we have in the building department is from nineteen seventy-seven, I see no record of an upgrade. Um, it might date back to before nineteen sixty-two, they're right on Fort Pond, uh, we would strongly recommend that they, um, look for, uh, our, look to our rebate program or other funding to update the sanitary system. It doesn't appear that there, that there's a mandatory upgrade with this project, however, if it did represent, um, uh, a more than fifty percent increase in value, then it would be considered a substantial expansion, you might want to talk to the building inspector about that. Uh, however, they're not adding any gross floor area, which is the other, um, criteria. Uh, they submitted a comprehensive landscaping plan, uh, however— Geez, I don't have it on here, um, but basically, uh, their landscaping plan covers all of the landscaping that was approved as part of the previous site plan from two thousand thirteen, um, as well as, um, really all that they're proposing additionally as far as landscaping is, um, a number of potted plants where basically, you can see this retaining wall, and then there's landscaping all across the front of the restaurant building. They'd be closing off this entrance and reconfiguring it, it around the side, so they, they're proposing to put some potted plants here just to continue the row of landscaping, so they're not proposing much additionally. Um, unfortunately, I don't have that, that full plan, but it does illustrate all of the landscaping, which is quite, um, uh, substantial throughout the property, uh, you should determine if they need anything additional. Uh, we find their lighting plan acceptable, seems to meet the Town Code and the board's guidelines, uh, you should determine if you agree. Uh, ARB comments are pending, uh, they are proposing, um, changes to the facade, um, of the building and the roof line, um, so, and that's really actually the most, most bulk of the exterior work that they're proposing. So comments from the ARB in there, their take on this is going to be very important. Uh, the fire marshal has outlined some changes to be ADA compliant that, uh, need to occur in the interior of the restaurant. Um, I don't think that'll be a problem, but the applicants will need to revise the floor plans. Uh, the town engineer did send you some comments, of which, I don't think that he had that many, I think there were only three. He said he looked at paving, drainage, parking, um, handicap striping, and that it's okay. Said the ADA ramp that they're proposing for the restaurant is satisfactory, and then he just reiterates, uh, that the fire marshal had concerns with the interior, um, ADA accessibility. So other than that, um, basically, the application is incomplete, um, pending the resolution of those issues. So, I guess, well, I, I guess you might want to, um, consider whether or not you need to contact the, um, building inspector, that's not in the memo, which is about to verify whether or not it's a substantial expansion, and they don't need to do a sanitary upgrade, again, we'd recommend that they strongly consider that, and there are avenues to get funding for that. Um, but other than that, um, it's really relatively minor changes, it's removal of some improved surfaces within jurisdiction of Fort Pond, which is a positive. Um, we would just recommend that, um, the stormwater runoff be controlled, um, because currently, there's really nothing that, that does that, so. The board should discuss those issues and form a consensus.
But reading the engineer's memo, Eric, didn't Tom Tomwood sign off on the drainage?
Well, actually, I shouldn't, I didn't phrase, what he said is site improvements such as drainage, amongst other things, um, have been completed by previous applicants, meaning that it was reviewed in previous, um, site plan applications. There is an area of drainage, the previous site plan application, um, dealt with the entirety of the site, of course, but I believe it was mostly really centered around, um, this is north to south, Fort Pond here, uh, around this, this stone patio and the parking lot down here. There is drainage that was added, this, this runs downhill, um, I'm not sure if you could see it in the pictures that I took, but this is the restaurant, and then this parking lot is, is pretty steep downhill, so drainage was required, um, down in this corner. But what I'm talking about is the motel and restaurant building, um, between, you know, between those buildings and Fort Pond, there's just leaders that just go out in the lawn and run into Fort Pond. Um, this project does entail, uh, a reconfiguration of the roof line, um, so, you know, and it does need a natural resources special permit, so that's something that we would always ask for, um, that every site controller stormwater runoff, uh, so that's what I'm basing that on. Um, I think Tom, you know, I, I don't know that he was to the site, um, to see that, it was something that I didn't notice, just looking at the plans, I had to go to the property and realize that, that the roof runoff was being directed towards the pond, um, but I, you know, I can't speak for him, so.
What about the, um, comment about the interior ADA requirements?
Um, it, it's really just a matter of, um, grades and, and locations of, of different, um, well, I should say locations, the configuration of the interior spaces, uh, it didn't look like anything that the applicants can't just, you know, have their, um, you know, their architect redraw and, and make work. It didn't, you know, I spoke with, um, Dave Brown, and he didn't think that it was something that, um, they couldn't do, it's just, um, conforming to what they call universal design for ADA accessibility in interior spaces.
Obviously, that's something that has to—
If you're after the bar, outside bar, I think—
Yes.
That was, condition of the last approval was that they're being removed, because there's no approval for it, it looks like, and it was removed upon inspection.
Oh, and they then added, well, this, that is part— That is part of this application is to remove that, I'm not sure—
We'll have to talk to the applicant about that, but—
That was the first picture.
Oh, yeah, there you go, that's a bomb.
Um, but they, this application, they have said that that is being removed, and I believe that that's probably because the issue was brought out there. It is, yeah.
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
This is more of a general question on these types of applications, but it's definitely specific to this one. Why is it that, I mean, we ask for a lot of things, Eric, you know, when you review these, these applications, we ask for lighting, we ask for setbacks, we ask for, uh, vegetation clearance, all that kind of stuff, because we want to make sure that those items either adhere or do not adhere to the code.
Absolutely.
Why is it that we do not ask for a plan that shows what kind of septic system it has? Because if the, if the property has a large-capacity cesspool, it would be illegal, and it, they would be required to remove it. So why isn't that one of the items that we have, along with those other items, which I believe are not as important as this one, but this one we managed not to include, why is that?
It is something that we ask for, it's listed, it's not actually codified, but it's listed on the application form, that the location and design of the sanitary system has to be illustrated, they do have it on the submitted survey, um, again, one of the points we made was that we need—
But you mentioned you didn't know what kind of sanitary system they—
No, I, I shouldn't say that, I, I, I do know, um, based on, well, based on looking at the plan, uh, that, uh, there is a separate sanitary system for the restaurant and for the bar. Uh, the sanitary system for the restaurant is in their parking lot here to the south, it consists of a septic tank and multiple shallow leaching pools, uh, similar design for the motel, uh, which is over here, um, with a septic tank and then a multiple pool design. Um, my point wasn't that I didn't know the design of it, it was that I don't know when that was last updated or installed. There's, our records in the building department card go back to nineteen seventy-seven, I see no record of a building permit to install a new sanitary system, and I know based on aerials that, uh, the facility existed before nineteen sixty-two, but, you know, basically before the adoption of zoning. So I don't know if they, I would imagine may, you know, that just physically, they probably would have need to have updated the sanitary system since the sixties, but you never know, um, but the, the survey does illustrate the design of it. Um, it is something you could ask as to whether or not it's a large-capacity septic tank, I don't think, based upon looking at that design, that it's going to meet that criteria, it's something you could ask the applicants to supply, to verify that.
Couldn't we ask them for the, the, uh, the, uh, plan that was submitted and stamped approved by the, the county health department? Why can't we ask for that?
You can, you, you certainly can.
No, but why can't we make that a regular—
As a matter of course.
Yeah, is that, uh, why can't we make that a regular—
Well, it's interesting, I mean, it's, it's—
Get the Town Code changed, acquire that.
It's tricky too, because they're not proposing to—
Well, the Town Code, the Town Code specifically outlaws large-capacity cesspool, and my, my question is, how do we know whether that's been violated or not if we don't get that? We don't get that plan from the county. I mean, you know, we have this plan that shows something on there, but I want something that's been stamped and approved, and I, and I can feel assured that what's on the ground is what they're telling us is there.
Well, the other requirements for site plan applications are within the Town Code, so to add that requirement would just be a local law to change, you know, to update the code to reflect that.
In the meantime, we can ask for it.
Sure.
We can ask for it under, under environmental—
You know, this is, this has come up, I've only sat on a couple meetings, and this has been a reoccurring issue, that you should go to the town board—
This is something we should, we—
To the town board liaison for this department and town board liaison for this board, and request a, a change. It goes to local law and then a public hearing.
It's an important question, but I know—
Lou's absolutely right that it is in the code, it's in the, the section of the code regarding, um, sanitary systems, the, the up, the mandatory upgrade to, to sanitary systems, not in the zoning chapter. But one of the conditions is it says if you have a high-capacity septic tank, as defined by the health department, that it, it's a mandatory upgrade, so you absolutely can ask for that.
Yeah, another question that I think comes up with this is whether or not the improvements that are being made upgrading it—
Yeah, well, that's the other—
Interior, there's a lot of interior work done, whether that represents a substantial extension value wise, at least so when the building inspector is evaluating the code to require a better sanitary system.
But that's, that's another, but, yeah, that's, that's true. That's true, but I don't even, I'm not even referring to that, I just think that that should be a mandated item that we should have, as—
You've, you've both outlined two of the criteria that's a mandatory upgrade, if it's a, a high-capacity septic tank, or if it's a—
High-capacity cesspool, though, which is important.
I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong term.
Well, and I think that your point is well-taken, because with Joanne's point, the building inspector can make that valuation, and then it's triggered. With your point is, how do we know if it's triggered without having documentation to back it up?
Don't we have somebody on staff, a natural resources director or an engineer who can look and say, by the design of the system, that we are, you know, approving as part of the site plan, it is not demonstrating a high-capacity cesspool?
Well, we, I mean, the planning department can, can do that.
Well, if, if you have, if you have septic tank, it is by definition not a high-capacity cesspool.
That's absolutely right, and that's—
So, I think that Lou has a good point, we should assure right early on with these applications, that we are not approving anything that has one of those, but I think that we don't necessarily need a health department's stamp plan to make that determination. How much do you get there?
Well—
Well, because I think, I think if, if they just show the sign on, on the—
But there's more, more information that's useful, besides knowing whether it's a cesspool or not.
Maybe, but you know what, may, what we may have is, with the changes in the Town Code, an opportunity to take a look at the, uh, criteria that, that the planning department brings to every application. Because a major, I mean, I know that this is a major issue, and one that we shouldn't, you know—
And I, I did speak in front of the town board, because they're, they're, uh, making some changes to the sanitary law, and I did mention to them that hopefully, we will have a work session, because I know I asked you, Sam, that, on this particular issue, and that we would be making recommendations to them.
I also think in the general purposes of site plan, special permit, and our secret review, we can ask people for information about their septic—
But I think what Lou's going to add is it should be more of a routine, like every time we—
I agree.
Yeah, in the meantime—
But I think we have that authority already.
Some of the site plan requirements is that it, right now in the codes is insisting a proposed disposal system is required—
And, right, no, but, excuse me, but my point, we've had an application recently, where they submitted a plan which showed that they had a septic tank, however, that was questioned by the Director of Natural Resources as to whether or not that was, that was actually so. That it might have been penciled in, what I'm saying is, why do we need to even, uh, have something that we doubt or are not sure of? Let's just get the, the plan that was submitted and stamped by the county.
Well, there's two ways, first of all, if you get a licensed danger, a licensed surveyor who puts it on the plan and stamps and signs it, they're putting their license on the line, that's pretty good. If you've ever tried to go to the health department to get data from old subdivisions, their records are terrible, and it's not always easy to get a copy of the stamped and signed—
Well, if you can't get it, then you should have—
Well, we should—
But we should move on.
We should move on, but I agree with you.
Include that as a—
But I think one, one thing we can do is ask for an engineer to certify what's there, I think in the absence of—
In the absence of—
Well, whoever, you know, can, can make, you know, do some kind of a, uh, in, you know, assessment, uh, now, present-day assessment of, of what is there.
I, I think that when we, if, if we're going to talk about going down that road, though, we should consider not just the, the septic issues, but other issues which may have arisen because of changes in the Town Code. I mean, may, how long have you been using this template? You know, probably quite a while, and, um, it may be time to—
The code does require, right now, that site plan show existing sanitary systems, you just have to be more vigilant about it.
But it's, but Eric is saying it's on, it's on here. The question is whether we want to require—
We don't know how old it is, if it's working.
You can certainly ask for more information about it. Um, I didn't bring up the issue of a high-capacity cesspool, because the plan illustrates a septic tank connected to a multiple leaching, leaching pool system. Um, I'm not going to question, um, Mr. Walsh in his surveying, um, and I, you know, obviously, those are underneath a parking lot, so it's not like something you could easily look at. Uh, but what's shown there is a septic tank connected to a multi-pool system, not a cesspool, let alone perhaps a high-capacity cesspool. It is codified, Lou is absolutely right, that, uh, that's a mandatory upgrade, so you could request proof that that's not the case here. I will say, though, um, you know, as Joanne brings up, there's the question of whether or not, um, monetarily, they're doing a substantial expansion, however, as far as just physical dimensions, they're not adding any gross floor area, they're not adding any seats, um, or anything else that would trigger additional sanitary flow. Um, that's why I suspect that the project does not represent a mandatory upgrade of the sanitary system. However, we do have multiple avenues, um, for the property owners to, um, pursue, whether it be grants from the water quality technical committee, technical advisory committee, um, or, uh, our rebate program to, uh, update that sanitary system, and that would be a great benefit. Obviously, you can see, just looking at that, how close it is to Fort Pond.
Sure.
Um, and you have sixteen motel units and a two-hundred-seat restaurant, um, producing sanitary affluent, uh, albeit on a seasonal basis, but, uh, it would be a, a very good benefit to the property. But as far as the issue of whether or not, you know, usually, when you have that situation with an old system, and I, I remember, I forget the name of the application, but I, I think I might know the one you're alluding to, where the survey sort of just said, um, you know, cover, metal cover, and, and it wasn't really well delineated what the design of the system is. What they drew here is pretty well delineated, it's a pretty standard conventional sanitary system, with a tank and shallow pools, uh, so I don't suspect that that's the case here, but absolutely, it is codified, and if you feel that you need that information to move forward, I think it's something you should ask of the applicants.
For, for example, if we got a— For, for example, if we got a, a section on a new septic system, the engineer has to draw it in section view from the side. And what you would normally get, which we're not getting here, is how far is the groundwater from the bottom of the leaching rings, which is very important. So that's something else that-
It's all incredibly important, but I think to Jameson's point, the only thing, and to Eric's too, the thing that's in our code right now is that you can't have a large-capacity cesspool. The stuff you're talking about is unrelated. It's important environmentally, absolutely.
It may not be related to the high-capacity cesspool, but it is-
Well, so I think to Jameson's point, we probably would need some, a, a change in the code to require that kind of information.
I don't think so. I think, you read the, the purposes of site plan, it's, it's to protect water quality.
And secret really, secret really obligates us to take strong steps to protect the environment.
And I showed where-
Would it be, would it be clearer if it was in the code and it was in, yes?
And I think it is in the code. And I, you know, that, that's part of what I said in my memo. One of the things, I showed where it is in the code, that it behooves us, and the code does say that you cannot, if the system is, the system is failing if you don't have enough groundwater, uh-
Distance from, to, to groundwater, yeah.
So there's, there are ways to estimate. I, I know it's not in our, well, I don't know if we want to get-
I think we're going to be on track.
I really think what we should do is, and I know you're present for this, and I agree, we, we will pick it up, but not tonight.
Okay.
So the applicant.
Oh, are we good, okay, then we'll do, we'll do our-
Yeah, then, then it's your turn.
Yeah, 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 we haven't even done that yet. We haven't heard from the applicant.
Hi, how are you? My name is Deborah Choron. I'm an attorney with Matthews Kirsten Cooley on behalf of 51 South Edgemere. Britten Bistrain is also here. She's worked on this application as well. And I'm happy to be here for the first time tonight. We applied a while ago. We know the town has been insanely busy, so this has been a long time coming to come before you. Our client is a new owner of this beautiful property. They're very excited to be part of the community and they take all of the environmental concerns very seriously. This particular application, because they are trying to get operational for the upcoming season after doing, doing an extensive renovation, was specifically designed so that it would not trigger a mandatory septic upgrade. That being said, they have already retained engineers and are exploring the rebate program. I actually didn't realize that that might be available to a commercial property as well. So we're definitely looking into that. At the state of affairs where we are now, we don't believe that this application triggers it. And I think Britton can later explain, you know, a little bit about what we do know about this system that we have before us. We did receive the engineer's comments and chief fire marshal David Brown's comments at the end of last week. And there were some questions about ADA compliance. We are thrilled to take those into consideration and our design team, architecture outfit, has already started working on that to redesign the bathroom stalls so that we have two compliant ADA stalls as opposed to just one. Our design team felt horribly actually that they didn't realize they made one stall that was larger. They thought that might be preferred. In actuality, our reading of the code, we completely agree with the town engineer and David Brown. So we'll be working on that and making a resubmission as well as an ADA compliant motel unit. They've already shown me a quick rendering of that, but we will again make that part of a resubmission to this board. And if you have any questions that I can answer for you tonight, I'm happy to do so. Our design team couldn't come out for this particular meeting, but I expect that they will be at future ones.
Did, did you want to speak to it or?
Do you want to speak to it?
Well, I mean, it's up to, it, it's your presentation.
I just, good evening, Britton Bistrain for the applicant, 51 South Edgemere LLC. I just wanted to note that the, the file that I have, I just pulled it up on my iPad, that's why I'm sitting here with my computer, is in your, I foiled the town files and in the building department, there is a 1982 final survey showing that there are exactly these systems, that there's three septic tanks, a grease trap, which is a GT here, and there are steel covers at grade. So that's a pretty modern system. It wouldn't classify for high capacity. If you want us, I mean, I don't know if that's enough details or we could submit a letter, you know, stating the same and attaching this map, but I actually got this from your files or from the building department files. That's all I had to address.
Yeah, go ahead.
And one thing I forgot to address, the outdoor bar, which was an issue when I did help this previous site with a previous owner get the certificate of occupancy in 2018, that outdoor bar was there. It had been approved as a service station. Obviously, it became a little bit more than that. It is part of our plan to have that removed and I know is their sincere intention. They're going to be changing that, where it is. Not only are they removing it, but they're going to be opening this as an entrance so it wouldn't be possible to replace it there. So I hope that alleviates some fears about the outdoor dining becoming, you know, standing pedestrians at a bar or standing crowd.
So would happen. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Eric did a great job getting this together. And I, I just wanted to add to a couple of the, the suggestions from the department. I also commend the applicant. I see they're going to put some solar panels on the roof as part of their roof rebuild. So for me, this is, we're looking at another, another example of a downtown Montauk pre-existing non-conforming site that I think if as we, is suggested in the memo, we really should get the health department flow calculations. I think we're going to find, this site might be entitled to 600 gallons a day. It's probably got over 3,000. I'm just giving you a rough. But I think once we, we do the calculation, you're going to see how non-conforming this is regard to sewage flow, which supports the department's recommendation that they evaluate an alternative system here. I have another question for Eric or the applicant. There's, the survey shows a Suffolk County drainage easeman crossing the property and going in, it looks like it drains into Fort Pond Bay. It's an underground culvert, goes across the property from the road. So I think it's draining stormwater from the road, looks like directly into Fort Pond. And I'm wondering if we could, we could get some information from the county department of public works about that.
It's, it's in a Edgemere right-of-way? Because I think technically that's still us. I think until you get up towards the, the firehouse and then it becomes Flamingo, not Ed, Edgemere.
Oh, well, it says it's a, a county, Suffolk County drainage easeman.
Oh, oh, that, yeah, 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 that's from a previous minor subdivision. And yes, I believe it's a drainage culvert from the road.
Okay. So we, we may want to take a look at not dumping that, and I, and that may not be part legitimately.
Is that part of the applications?
No, but I think it is.
Yeah, I think that was, I don't think that's necessarily, well, first of all, it's probably not runoff coming from this property. It's probably runoff coming from the road right-of-way across this property. And I think that, because there was a minor subdivision done that created this lot in, I think, 86. And I believe that was a condition of it that, whether it was the town or the county, if it says county, then I guess it was county, but wanted this property to give them the right to run a culvert underneath their property. So I don't think it's, I think it's actually the right-of-way dumping water into Fort Pond, not these applicants. But I'll look into it a little bit more and check out what that's-
All right, that would be great. I understand we may not-
It may not be in the context attached.
And I want to say, you were, you were very close in numbers. I would estimate that the allowable sanitary flow on the property based on current regulations is about 750 gallons per day. And a 16-unit motel plus 200-seat restaurant generates 4,400 gallons per day.
Yeah, so that's, that's why Fort Pond is in, is in trouble.
One of the reasons.
One of the reasons.
We'll address that, won't we?
Yeah. So another, it appears that one of your, one of your leaching rings on the restaurant system is also off the property. I just mentioned that. It's in the, is that a county right? I, I don't know if we know Edgemere.
I thought it was towns south of, well, actually, you know what?
I think it is here, yeah.
Yeah, it might, I know on my regular program, this is the web application, it, it could, would tell you whether it's county or not, but I'll, let me look while you make your comments and I'll see if I can-
I'm almost there, this is town, this is far south.
Um, okay, and the, the calculation, the other, one of the other parts of the non-conformity, which I think is of interest to us, is that the clearing, clearing in the harbor protection overlay district, I have it written down here, it allows, it allows 16,215 square feet of clearing in the, on that lot. They currently have 44,887 feet cleared. So this may, may lead us to see if we can get some revegetation, especially in that area between the hotel, the buildings and the pond that looks like it's lawn now. I'm wondering if we could get some low, something, not something that's going to block the view, but something that's going to not involve fertilizer, pesticide, herbicide, and also delay or retard some of the stormwater. So I'm, I'm thinking maybe some revegetation in there.
Well, maybe some permeable reactive barriers, maybe, you know, that kind of stuff, rain gardens, that kind of thing.
Which is ever, might be simpler to just plant it. So the, the, I think, I, I agree with Lou, you know, I think we've got to, we've got to get the, the, the flow calculations on the plan. We really have to see if this applicant would consider a alternative system here. This is so non-conforming. And even though it's not in use really, I mean, I would, I would expect that those 16 motel units are used year-round at this point. But the 200-seat restaurant right on the pond there, that's a, we should try to do something about that. The NRSP you mentioned, Eric, I, it looks like some of the proposed improvements are less than 100 feet from the wetland.
Uh, yes, but they're not actually adding anything. They're, they're actually removing things. They're removing this concrete patio back here, they're removing an exterior bar, they're removing and reconfiguring an entrance way. You're only triggered, if you're within 100 feet, you're only triggered for a variance if you're, you're adding structures. If you're just reconfiguring or removing, it's just a natural resources special permit.
Well, this, so this has showed, the survey shows additional, I mean, the square footage may be a net decrease, but there are some new, new areas that are being covered with structures.
Well, they're, they're existing areas, they're existing roof areas or existing structures and they're reconfiguring them. So they're, they're not adding new square footage. There's, there's basically two, well, I, I guess I should say three main things that they're doing. One is they're removing this concrete patio, which does not trigger the need for a variance, it's just an NRSP because they're making improved surfaces. And they're basically reconfiguring the staircase to be underneath the existing roof line. The other, the second of the three things is removing the exterior bar, which is on a patio and they're just changing it to stairs and they're not adding a structure. And then the entrance way, which as you can, can't see it here because it's actually also underneath an existing roof line, they're just reconfiguring the way that the steps are, are improved and they're actually reducing floor area. So if you're not adding structures or gross floor area, even if you're still within 100 feet, you, you just need a natural resources special permit, which makes sense because we want you to remove improved surfaces within 100 feet. But we want to review those projects so that we can make sure that the construction is done in a way that's not going to impair the, the natural feature, which is why I mentioned that we would standard, we would recommend project limiting fencing, probably straw bales or some other kind of sediment control in case something runs off towards the pond. And then I, as I mentioned, I would also be recommending that the, the downspouts there be directed to, to drywells.
So, and I think the ZBA during their NRSP review will probably want some of these, like, I wouldn't be surprised if they want revegetation, they want those drywells for the, the roof runoff. So these are things that both boards probably will want.
That's also something that's sort of a standard request when we review natural resources special permits. This one might go administratively in that provided the applicants are okay with all the mitigation measures that the department proposes, it wouldn't need to go to a public hearing in front of the zoning board. I just mentioned the two, the sediment control, the drywells. I did mention in the memorandum that the, the lot inspection is, is a bit outdated, the, the identification of the wetland boundary. That should be updated. I think they can probably just do that through a verification, meaning our, our people don't need to go out there and actually reflag it again. They could probably look at the previous survey. Fort Pond hasn't changed much as far as the boundaries, but that should be updated from there. It is, you know, on this property, you can see that the restaurant building in some places is really like right up to the wetland boundary. We usually recommend that there be some kind of no-mo buffer or some kind of plantings within a certain distance from a wetland boundary. It varies depending upon the property and what we can realistically expect people to do.
But I don't-
But that's something we look at after the wetland boundary is verified, that it's accurate.
So could you, could you make mitigation in the form of revegetation plan?
Sure.
Part of an administrative?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, I think that's, that's pretty much it. So it's the, the leaching pool off-site, which I don't know if we need to worry about that, except that it is, does go to the adequacy of the septic system. It's in the county right-of-way. Yeah?
We just got a $400,000 grant from the county to extend bike sidewalks and bike paths down from the train station down to downtown Montauk. So that on the side of the road, so we will be looking at, at that and that would probably disrupt the stream. And so we, that will be a time that we can work with the county to fix that.
Great.
That's good news.
That makes a lot of sense. The, the only other final thing was the, the scenic easeman. I think the scenic easeman needs to come out of the lot area calculation that, I don't think he did that.
I'll double check that.
He took out the, the drainage easeman and, but I don't, I don't, apparently there's a scenic from the minor subdivision. Yeah, okay. That's it.
Anyone have anything else they wish to add to Randy's rather comprehensive review?
Well, I, I have a couple of things. I think Randy did a great job. Thank you for that. I'd like to ask Ann to take a look at the plans and see, I know that it's Eric's assessment that it's not going to, the improvements will not trigger a 50% increase in the value of the, of the restaurant, you know, the facility. But I'd like to get a determination from Ann on that. And I think the leaders and gutters should be filtered, which I think is what Eric discussed. I, I would ask the applicant to consider, and I'm glad to hear that you are looking and engineer is looking at that, but Randy's made the point with the data, but I would implore you as a good neighbor, you know, even if this does not, the requirement does, does not trigger the installation of a low sanitary system, that, you know, there are many creatures and beings that are going to benefit from it. And I think it's, it would be the right thing to do. And I would also ask that in terms of the runoff on the building, that maybe you look at a permeable reactive barrier or a rain garden or some other plantings around the areas where the stormwater runoff might be directed, because there are ways, you know, there are green ways to handle that that would be helpful. And that's all I have to add.
Anyone else?
Uh, you know, I just want to emphasize again the importance of putting in a new septic system here. You know, one of the attractions of this restaurant is being on the pond. And, you know, I've been to that restaurant many times, a beautiful view. So it goes hand in hand that if you want the restaurant to be successful and to maintain that attraction, that you work towards keeping the pond clean and doing whatever we can to remediate what's already been some pollution in the pond. So I, I, it sounds as though you guys want to do the right thing and I'm hoping that, you know, this will be the number one thing on your list.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I would just add in terms of the septic, I think it's important too, and I think what we-
I think what we have in the code right now is that large-capacity cesspools are banned, and I think that we should ensure that no property has one, and we should start that process really early on, as Lou often points out. I think if the planning department can tell us this system is not that, we're good. If they don't know, maybe we can have the natural resources director or somebody else, the engineer, who can give us more insight. If we can't prove it, we could ask the, you know, the applicant to have an engineer certify it. I don't think it necessarily means health department plans, which I think involves, you know, somewhat of a code changer, or certainly a different, a different thing.
And quite often, we do have in building department records copies of new sanitary systems when they're updated. Like I said, I did look through the records and I tried to find that, to look at a sanitary profile and, and the specs on it, but I didn't, I couldn't find it.
All I'm saying is, I agree wholeheartedly of bringing that up right away. If it's a simple thing and you can tell us that's not what's there, I'm satisfied. And I think we probably ought to formalize what steps we take to ensure that we're not letting an application get to the final stages before we say, oh, I hope this isn't there, and we really don't know at that point. So, in this case, I'm not concerned, but I think it's a good point that we should do every time that, you know, there's an application before us. I also think to Kathy's point that, I think we should ask the chief building inspector whether this triggers, you know, the 50% value increase, and I think that that should be a question that I frankly don't want to be responsible for answering, and so I think if there's, you know, any issue, we ask the building inspector who'd make that determination.
We don't make that, that's, that's our department.
Right, but why don't we start doing that and just absolutely, even if we think we're clear, say, Ann, what do you think? And that way we have, you know, a consistent way of coming to a, an answer there.
Seems like we need to update some of our procedures in that regard, because it's, it's been, it came up an awful lot when I was on the ZBA, and it's come up an awful lot here, so. All right, is anyone, I guess that comes in. All right, so, going through the questions. Should a site plan which includes all necessary elements, including but not limited to coverage calculations, parking calculations, and illustrated and numbered parking spaces, clearing, such should be submitted?
Yes.
Answer all as yes. Should an updated wetland flagging indoor verification be obtained?
Yeah.
Yes? And is, is any additional landscaping required?
I think so.
I think so too.
It's not premature at this point, but, all right.
revegetation.
Yeah, Randy just made a big pitch for revegetation.
Yeah, I mean, it sounded like what you were talking about, revegetation or establishment of a buffer as opposed to landscaping, which would be for, you know, aesthetic.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's why the word landscaping kind of clicked out. And does the board agree that directing stormwater runoff to drywells and the installation of a low nitrogen sanitary system should occur on this site? And I'm going to hear?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes?
Yes.
And I hope that the applicant hears that it, we said, yes, 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 yes to that.
Did, did anywhere in here say that we'd like to see the county flow calculations on Phil Surdo?
No, but Eric, Eric mentioned it.
You want to add that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely.
So is that, that's the source of those calculations, is the county?
County.
Jamison, can we ask that, I mean, if we're asking about flow calculations, you know, what, what can we do with it, if we do ask it, what can we do with that information?
Well, I will say, keep in mind, just to let you know, no aspect of the project that they've proposed in what they've submitted increases the generated sanitary.
That's why I'm asking, because we're, we're getting that, you know, the degree of nonconformity, which, you know, we have rules on the books, whether we like them or not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but I think, I think it goes to the present-day assessment of what's there. I think we need to, we need to know what's there. Whether we can act on it or not, it should be an accurate representation of what's on the site and what the design flow permitted versus actual.
Yeah, current standard.
Yeah.
There's a reason there's a current standard.
Of course, well, not to put, not to put Jamison on the spot then, but I just will leave this as an open-ended question, because it's going to come up again. If an application is before us, we're concerned about the degree of nonconformity and whether it meets current standards, but there's no increase in flow, is there something we can ask for, and if we do, to what end?
Right, well, I think the, the way that you asked it the first time, sort of like a two-part question, I could say yes to the first part, that you can certainly ask that of them. The second part where you said, and what can we do with it, is actually a question back to the board in terms of, well, what, what are you intending to do with it? And I think you also sort of know the answer to that, that, that under our current code, if what they show you demonstrates what we're all talking about, that we already know, this board can't mandate them to do anything absent Ann's determination or something to that effect.
I don't think it changes our expectations.
But I do agree with, yeah, I, I agree with Kathy's sort of assessment that if we want to understand the entire site and look at the site plan as a whole and what is there, then that could, that's relevant to your understanding of how everything is that.
Existing conditions.
Existing, right, exactly.
Existing conditions.
Also, I'd like to just add, I know that the applicants already said that they would do it, that our, that we indicate that there'll be compliance with the ADA interior, so we could add that to the list of things to be included. All right, very well then.
And I think I got the impression from the board that you wanted to send a letter to the principal building inspector, asking whether or not it's a substantial expansion?
Yeah.
Just making sure I got that on the list.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much, Eric, thanks to the applicant, we appreciate it, look forward to hearing back from you. Okay, the next item is the new singular wireless at Montauk Yacht Club.
Okay, this is an application to add three remote radio heads and replace six existing ones within the lighthouse building of the Montauk Yacht Club, property's own resort and harbor protection overlay. They've not submitted any visual renderings, however, they have submitted elevation plans, and when this was originally proposed, this is a modification, when it was originally reviewed, you did have a visual analysis. They submitted a letter, this is the lighthouse building, I'll zoom into the aerial photograph of the property, but I think you know it, Montauk Yacht Club on Star Island. They submitted a structural analysis that confirms that the lighthouse building can handle the, the equipment. An RF engineer's report meets FCC regulations, they're not proposing any additional lighting, and this does qualify as a minor site plan. It's a swap-out in addition of some minor equipment entirely within the interior space of that building. It's not visible from the outside. The board should determine whether or not you're willing to waive the public hearing requirement. Oh, I'm sorry, I should say, in the memo, it says that we haven't received an RF engineer's report, but we did receive that late last week, so they, they did check off on that. So you should decide whether or not you want to hold a, a public hearing. If you don't, then it looks like the application is ready for approval.
Very well. Does the applicant have a representative here?
How you doing? My name is Patrick O'Rourke, I'm representing AT&amp;T, the applicant. Basically, what Eric explained is everything's in the interior of the building. When these things started out, they were just cellphone antennas, but now with data and other things and streaming, we have to add in what they call these RRH units to decipher the information. So we're basically doing all on the interior of this, of the existing lighthouse. Does anyone have any questions, or?
If you can't see it.
Right.
We call them outside. It's an identity site.
Nothing's going to change outside, it's all, it's all in the interior, and we're not even touching the antennas, we're just adding the RRH units that interpret information that comes into the antennas.
Okay, very well. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. And Randy, I think this is one's yours also.
Oh, I, it doesn't get much better than this. So, that's really, that's really all I have to say.
Especially, especially from you, you said that.
No, no, let's get, let's get to the last question.
No idea how rare this is.
Then say that. You know, he's still got a chance.
Yeah.
Is there, do we, is there anyone else that anyone has?
No, I agree.
To Randy's cogent comments, all right. Is there any?
I think we should waive the public.
Well, yeah, no, no, that's the second question. Do we have any other, any, you didn't have any comments, right?
Just that I don't think we need a public hearing.
No, we'll, we'll get to that in a second.
Any additional visual information that we need, or is it, we satisfied with what we got? Yeah, that's one. Number two, does the board wish to waive the public hearing requirement?
Yes.
Yes, all around. Okay, I should say that ordinarily, on these things, we don't, but based on the fact that there's not going to be any exterior visual change, I'm on board with waiving the public hearing. And will the application be ready for approval once the, oh, we have the RF engineer's report? So I guess we can all agree that the application's ready for approval?
Yes.
Yes.
So, okay, there we are.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, some of them, we move right along.
Not many of them.
Not many, but, well, you know.
The ones that work right, yeah, that's just a good one.
Well, well, here we have sprint at town hall modification.
Hey, this is a request to modify our tier-two wireless facility. They want to replace three existing remote radio heads and replace three existing panel antennas and add three panel antennas and add six remote radio heads. They submitted photographs of the existing site conditions as well as elevation plans. The board should discuss whether or not you need any more visual information. They've submitted a structural analysis, which I sent to Eddie Schnell with the police department, and he verifies that it's correct. They have demonstrated FCC compliance with an RF engineer's report, and this also was a minor site plan as an antenna swap-out, and you can elect to waive the public hearing requirement if you wish. So in conclusion, you should discuss the public hearing, whether or not you need any more information. If the answer's no to both of those, then it's ready for approval.
Okay, and Ian, this is yours.
Yeah, I don't think this is a major.
I want to hear from the applicant.
Oh, thank you, I apologize. Does the app?
She's been waiting.
I had a feeling that, yeah, no, 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 it's, I'm, I'm in an expedited mood right now, so these phone applications.
Good evening, Jean Reno, we would just respectfully request that the board waive the public hearing.
There you go.
Minor modification.
See, I could have done that.
Well, since you asked, I, you know, I don't think this is a major, a major change, and I don't think we would likely receive comments, so I'd be in favor of waiving the public hearing.
I think that the situation of the, of this particular tower is well-known, and it doesn't sound like it's going to be any worse than it already is.
It'll be slightly worse, but not so much that people will notice.
Yeah, maybe a few pigeons might.
Yeah.
Eric, do you happen to have an aerial of this? I just want to show the board something.
What, what it looks like? We could go over here and take a look.
Where they, where they put it, where they put it when they built it. This, this goes to the town board or the town itself not coming to us when they, when they do stuff. This, this tower is about five feet from the property line.
Yeah, that, that property line, over there.
Yeah, cell tower.
Let's not delve too deep into.
I know, I know, I just want to.
Wants to make the point.
I just want to make the point that the town, the town is one of the worst developers in the state.
Sure that they'll appreciate hearing that.
The gentleman the board knows who's at a lot of these meetings, who reviews the structural analysis, works right there. So he's, he's more concerned than anybody.
Looking right out the window and watch it.
Okay.
All right, so folks, do we require any additional visual information?
No.
And is the application complete and ready for approval?
Yes.
All together, there's no?
Going to waive the public hearing?
Uh, you know, that's not one of our, do we have, is there no public hearing on this because it's, whose application?
Qualifies minor site plans, and the board has the discretion to waive the public.
All right, because I don't, we're interested, there's no, usually there's a problem.
That's not one of the questions, yeah, but it says in conclusion, we should discuss whether we want to waive the public.
How do we feel about waiving the public hearing? Does anybody want a public hearing on this?
I, I don't think we need one.
Okay, there you are.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Take home everyone, thank you.
You too.
Yeah, you too.
Careful out there, don't, you know, stand underneath any towers.
Tats and dogs, and the things are flying into people's tires, I can report that.
Oh, that's, that's elsewhere. All right, next is 224-228 Springs Fireplace Road.
Yippee.
Just a note, this is Sharon's application, Kathy has graciously volunteered.
Graciously flattened her tires by.
This is an application to create a truck terminal use over two single and separate lots. Their zone CI, lot 8.1 was previously improved with a single-family residence, which was demolished in 2014. The parcels were vacant and mostly cleared until sometime earlier this year, when the property was nearly 100% cleared. This occurred without site plan approval or a building permit, and a stop-work order was issued. This is in the special groundwater protection area in the Pine Barrens and is a type-two action. The use definition, it doesn't seem to meet a truck terminal, it seems more like a storage yard. You might want to get a determination from the building inspector about the appropriate use definition. This is designed as one site straddling two properties. You might want to ask council and/or the building inspector if this is allowed, or if they merge automatically. Old drainage is proposed on lot 10.1, which is the southernmost lot. So this, this clearly has been designed as one site, but they're saying it's two separate properties. The board would need to waive the accessory structure setbacks. The front yard setback requires 50 feet, whereas they're proposing varying from 20 to 50 feet, and side and rear are 15 and 25 feet respectively, and this varies from 0 to 10 feet as proposed. They've shown 14 parking spaces for 10 trucks and could fit 39 individual passenger vehicles without trucks. We have no objection to this and commend them for having a parking space for each truck. I'll come back to the town engineer's comments. Landscaping, they're proposing oaks and inkberry. The plan should be amended to meet the standard spacing and quantity requirements. The board should also consider larger trees to come closer to what was removed earlier this year. They're also proposing a row of arborvitae and a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with black mesh basically around the perimeter of the interior storage yard area. And I can show you the landscaping plan and zoom in. So basically along, basically along Springs Fireplace Road, they're proposing deciduous woodlands to be similar to what was removed, but then a row of arborvitae and fence around the, the immediate perimeter of the storage yard.
Is the arborvitae going to be within fencing?
No, it's right on the outside of it. So they would have the, the black chain-link six-foot fence with mesh screening, then a single row of arborvitae all along that, and then in the front, they would have those oaks and, and inkberries. Under the previous, the current proposal, you should determine whether or not you think additional screening or landscaping is necessary, and again, we note that the quantity and spacing of trees there is not consistent with what we've reviewed in the past, and you should require that it, that it be consistent.
And this area was cleared?
Uh, yes, it was nearly, well, it was otherwise 100% cleared earlier this year. Before that, it was probably about 25% cleared. There were, like I said, there was a residence until 2014, so there was a little area of clearing where that residence used to be and where they had a small lawn, but the rest of it was deciduous woodlands and has been back since before our earliest aerials of 1960.
But what is the allowed clearing for this use?
Well, it's CI zone, so technically you're allowed to clear 100% of it. If it was in water recharge or harbor protection, there would be a clearing restriction. The total lot coverage allowed is 75%, but that's not a clearing restriction. So in other words, they could do 75% of the lot, which is basically what they're proposing here, and then do landscaping, not revegetation, on the other 25%. What they're proposing here is sort of a mixture of revegetation and landscaping, that being the oaks and inkberry being more of a revegetation-style design, and the arborvitae being landscaping. So this will go to the ARB, even though there's no buildings proposed, but you need their comments. The fire marshal has signed off on this, said that there's no further review needed. We do need a complete site plan with all the necessary elements. What we have right now is this, which is sort of a joint landscaping and parking layout sketch, and then a drainage plan, which is here, and I'll zoom in a little bit. So this is sort of a drainage and pavement plan, which is a good segue into what the town engineer said. But so basically, the application is incomplete. Tom had numerous points. He said, well, I'll summarize, he said that the main entrance and emergency entrance, because I skipped the town engineer section. The, this, well, actually, let me get a clearer. Very popular area of town.
Yeah.
These were right then.
Yeah. Okay.
There you go, that's it.
So this is the first application you heard this evening below the bridge. These are the two lots of the subject application. I have verified on building department records, they are single and separate, however, as you can see on the site plan, they're sort of proposed, well, not sort of, they are proposed to be developed as one site. That's half a legal question and half whether or not it meets your standards, as to whether or not it's appropriate to design it as one site, if it's going to be two separate lots, or whether or not, and if you look at your standards, each lot is supposed to be self-sufficient and, and meet all the criteria. Again, all the drainage were both lots, since it is on the one lot. But getting back to what I was saying about the entrance, so they have now a curb cut here, and I can go back to the plan and show you, but they're proposing to block that off and use that solely as an emergency entrance and exit. I want to ask the applicants exactly what entails an emergency, but that the superintendent of highway, Steve Lynch, this is his yard here, has requested that the lot take access from his existing access point here over an access easement, and the idea being that he didn't want a second conflict point here near his entrance, which makes sense and is consistent with good planning, especially we know Springs Fireplace Road is a very busy road. So he says the drainage calculations appear satisfactory. He notes it in the narrative, they say that the parking area will be entirely asphalt, however, the notations aren't clear on that. That should be corrected. He says the parking spaces should be numbered. They showed one handicapped accessible space on the north end of the property, as you can see right here, but then there's also one shown down here. It's actually kind of tough to see because there's a catch base in there, but it doesn't have the requisite unloading aisle with the hash marks. They don't need that second space, but if they have it, it has to have the, the hash marks. He says there's no groundwater protection policy requirement since there are no buildings. Our groundwater protection policy deals with the sloping and epoxy and usually of the interior of building floors. The applicants, to their credit, have proposed in the drainage here, the southern end of the property, mesh filters to capture any kind of contaminants that are in stormwater runoff. He says concrete curb deal is satisfactory. He mentioned the, the filters that I just mentioned. He looked at interior traffic circulation and says that the yard is quite large and that there should not be an issue of conflict between trucks and passenger vehicles. He said the site distance for the emergency exit, which would be here, is acceptable out onto Springs Fireplace Road. And then he asked for gate details. It's indicated but not shown that there would be a gate on the main access here from the highway department, and then in a gate for the emergency access, but there's no details on, on what those gates look like or how they function, so he was asking for that. So other than that, I think, I think that basically summarizes my comments.
Eric, can you explain the parking? I'm, I'm not clear.
Sure. So, and the applicants can clarify this, but the way that they submitted it looked like from the narrative, this is going to be one storage yard for, I believe, two separate businesses, who the, the owners of those two lots are, intend to cooperate, I guess is the word to use, in the use of the site. But what they did was, and, well, maybe this sketch shows it a little bit better. So in this sketch here, you can see, you see these blue spaces here, along here? They left those as regulation spaces for passenger vehicles, for their workers. I think their idea here is to basically store work trucks and three pieces of equipment for, I believe, a landscaping business, but then also have parking around the perimeter here for the workers to park, so that they can come to the site in the morning and then pick up the truck and, and move the truck. They have 10 different designated spaces for trucks. They provided 14 parking spaces for passenger vehicles, for the workers. And then also, they, they, you know, did, they measured it out. And so these are the trucks in a row here in, in the back. This is actually the proposed warehouse building of below the bridge, would be this property, neighboring property. They proposed to put the trucks in a line there, and what they're saying is when they moved those trucks, they actually could fit a total of 39 passenger vehicles on site, but they're proposing 14 passenger vehicle permanent spaces.
Oh, I see. So if there are no trucks, if there are no trucks in the yard, then you can fit 39. I see. That, that's what was confusing me. All right, thank you.
But the number of trucks that are intended to be there are?
Well, that, I mean, that's the way they drew it.
Okay.
So it's a total of 14, that includes how many? Five? No, that's like nine car, car spots.
No, 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 there should be 14 permanent passenger cars.
Oh, oh, 14, okay.
Right.
And then, okay.
For 10 trucks, and then if all the trucks were gone overall on the site, they could put another, you know, 25.
That was what was missing from the below-the-bridge at neighboring.
Yeah, well, there's something about, yeah, I know, I was going to say.
There's a place for the workers to park their cars and then trade off into the truck.
Um, okay, any other questions, Eric? I guess not. The applicant? Do we have the both of you, or? Oh, my, what a. We are, we have a wealth of legal talent before us tonight.
And Jameson.
I thought I was included.
Wow.
I certainly included you.
This is a, whether it's.
Can I justify yourself?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eric Bregman, Tengens Red Lane in East Hampton. It doesn't matter whether you call it a storage yard or a truck terminal. I was jokingly thinking that the truck terminal, Eric got concerned that the truck terminal definition says it's handling freight for other, for third parties, or materials for third parties, and one of the owners is Quackenbush, who is, you know, a septic, so he may be handling third-party materials, not of the usual kind. But it doesn't matter. In fact, in fact, a storage yard is better because it's permitted zone, it's not a special exception, so whatever you or the building inspector wants on that. And this is also different from below the bridges. These are two local businesses, and it's their trucks, so you know who's going to be there and what trucks are going to be there.
Who's the other business?
The other business is a landscaper, they're brothers-in-law or brothers? What? Mark Daniels is a fellow in the checkered shirt.
Tru-move.
And Mr. Quackenbush is the fellow on the other end.
Mark Daniels, tru-see, thank you very much.
And, and for all the reasons, I know you've been through this with below the bridge, but so I'll just very quickly sum up. It gets the, the employees off the streets and their cars off the streets, and give them places to park. It's 14 to 10 is the ratio, I mean, 14 car spaces that have nothing to do with the trucks. And as Eric showed you on this drawing, these are the trucks in red, and they're the actual trucks they have now, so I mean, it may not be the same forever, but these are the actual trucks. And when those trucks leave, there are more partners. I think you went through that with below the bridge.
Eric, could you just pull the mic a little closer to me?
I'm sorry, yes, sure.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you, and I'm just worried that.
I have a little horse too, so I apologize.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, thank you.
So it's, there's plenty of parking, it's not, and it's going to prevent anybody from, or any of the employees from using the streets. There's no, there are no residential neighbors, as you know, below the bridge is, is right there. Across the street is Bistrion's Yard. In fact, that's where they work out of now or keep some of their trucks now. And north is the highway department, and south is, is more industrial stuff. So there's nobody being disturbed by this. It'll be landscaped. We thought we're doing a good job, we'll do a better job and work out the landscaping with Eric and make sure it's satisfactory to them, so it'll be completely screened. Sam, your question was about where the fence was. Fence is behind the screening, so they're not in front of the screen.
All right.
All right, and if you want to, some other, I think the, a chain link with the black webbing is the least imposing and also the most secure, so.
Can I, can I make a comment about that? Because I see in the memo that it says that this is referred to ARB for comments.
Right.
If it is a six-foot fence in a front yard, it needs ARB approval, not just ARB comments. So part of the design, how this fence is going to look if it's higher than four feet is really ARB's, completely within ARB's jurisdiction, so I just want to point that out to this board.
And, and again, it's a question of security, and it's up to the ARB. If they want it to be four feet, it'll be four feet, but it should be six feet. In terms of, in terms of the merger, first of all, you can't do it.
That's, that's the big question.
Yes, I'm sorry. The merger, you can't do it, they're both mortgage properties, and it would be a default under the mortgage, and it would be, to possible foreclosure of that as a legal matter. But also, from your point of view, I mean, what are your concerns? Right? Your concerns are that the property works, and that if one of, and as Eric said in his memo, if one of the properties were sold, what would happen? First of all, it's not likely, these are two families operating their businesses, et cetera, but it is possible that one of the businesses could decide to go, you know, go out of business and retire or something like that, and want to sell one of the lots. Well, there's a site plan that says this is how you have to set this up. The access, main access here, goes into the second property, so it's already there.
Where's the line, if you don't mind?
The property line is one of the dotted lines up, where the dash lines up.
So it reaches, so that access road, which is the, with the diagonal striking, that's the access road?
This is the access easement that would be proposing, and would go to the second. So this second, lower lot would also have access across, across the town property.
Will there be easements in the deeds? Is that how, how you want to?
Well, we're asking now the town board for approval for that acce, for that access easement, but I'm sure in that process, they'll ask us to draft it, or we'll draft it with the, the town attorney's office. But there would be a standard access easement, and that could, should go further, and again, for your concerns. It should also say that both lots, that the drainage is there and can't be interfered with, with any develop, any further development.
It seems like most of the drainage is on the, would that be the southerly lot?
Yes, can, I don't know, have it changed?
Eric? I think I can. Thank you, Jameson.
I, I know I think to do, but I probably screwed it up.
No, 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 you've got to know your limitations when it comes to technology.
I wouldn't touch it.
So, yes, but that's because that's what the, the.
Slope?
The slope of it is, and that's, I think all the engineers agreed that that's the right place to put it, but it would be there, and we're certainly willing to include either in the access easement or a separate easement, that it has to be available to both lots. Obviously, the northern lot needs that, that drainage.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And, and also, the emergency access should be included in that, and the screening, all of which we can put in a covenant, but the most important thing is, it's in your site plan. And if anybody, if the, let's say. The lower lot was sold. If anybody's going to do anything there, they have to come back to you. All right? And, and also, that easement should include the parking spaces, the ability, because they're going to have, not just cross-access, but cross-parking. In other words, the guys, the guys who are working here, or whose trucks may be up here, can use the parking spaces down below. And it's easy to do when you're related, but that should be in a covenant. So I don't think, and I'm certainly open to any thoughts, I don't think there are any issues about having two lots that have a, that are of concern to you, or to, that, that get in the way, or.
You're saying from a planning perspective?
From a planning perspective, yes.
I mean, look, we always worry, you know, in terms of planning, is what happens if?
Right.
And, and so.
Well, what happens if whoever buys that is going to be stuck with, or had the benefit of, your site plan, or, or this site plan? Right, had the benefit of your site.
What if they didn't agree, Eric? Let's say a generation hence, they want to sell, one, one, part of the family wants to sell one lot, and then they want to come in with their own site plan to do something different. But the other lot doesn't agree, they want to keep it the way it is. What if, what if there's a disagreement?
Well, the, and that's asking a focused question of what I was trying to address, so let me try to say it more focusfully. One, we're willing to put it into a covenant that would bind everybody, that you have to keep the drainage, you have to keep the parking spaces, et cetera. Two, you could say, no, you can't do that in your site plan. You know, I mean, because it would screw up the drainage, or it would, it would impede, would change the screening or something.
Or because that was how we planned it in 2019?
Right.
Or 20, when we approved this.
Right.
You can do a proportional, I mean, where you merge them, and then one bank's got 30% of the collateral, and the other's got 70%.
Yeah.
If you want to negotiate that.
Yeah, that's the same, Eric.
No.
Could be a lot of work for you.
Trevor wanted to say something.
Trevor Daryl, Tengens Red Lane for the applicant as well. I think I can speak to that point in that I did the original purchasing with the applicants. And the way that we set it up was, we have cross-spouses owning each entity, so, and in that, we each have recorded rights of first refusals to each other lot as well. So if spouses divorce, and they don't agree to buy each other out, the properties can't change hands. So that, we tried to limit the ability to separate these, separate and aside from any planning decisions. And that's all recorded in the county with the deeds.
Those are on the deeds.
And that, they are absolutely recorded, and.
Very creative.
Clever, yeah.
We tried to anticipate using them as one lot, but with dual owners, so.
Can't do a corporation.
Well, they're two LLCs.
Okay.
But, so you have a Daniel spouse and a Quackenbush spouse own one LLC.
Okay.
And the others own the other.
And actually, it's the two LLCs, which kind of gets in the way of a merger also.
Correct.
Could you submit that to the file?
Yeah, there's public record.
It's public record, I certainly can, sure, but it's recorded with the original transfer paper.
Probably, that's a good idea.
But I can't merge them because of the mortgages. Mrs. Lopome, I think, would frown upon us trying to interfere with her ability to.
Would the families mind merging them if you could?
I, I, we had that conversation initially with Mr. Osborne, who represented the sellers, and she wasn't inclined to entertain that, because, you know, for her estate planning purposes, they were separate entities, so.
Okay.
So we tried to deal with it on our end when we recorded the documents.
All right, thank you.
The engineering is, you've heard, is all positive. Tom was terrific. He said the, the drainage went beyond, and he said, this is exceptional. I've never seen Tom put that in one of his memos before, so that was very nice to see.
Let's see.
It's exceptional. I thought it was a thing.
It's right in there.
Verify that.
Yep. It's there.
Exceptional. Otherwise, it's satisfactory.
All right, all right.
It's the usual adjective.
So what else do we know? Oh, and just a minor thing, but I'll take it up with Tom on the paving. Can you put the, the other one, the engineering drawing? The bottom line is that everything Tom wanted with the specifics that he spelled out is in fact on the drawing. He may just not have seen it, it's in a box on this drawing, but we'll make it.
Oh, I don't, these are the only two, this or this? Otherwise, you need Eric. And Eric? Here you are. Is there? Because I'm not familiar with the board.
I can, can I, may I show them the, the old-fashioned way?
Sure, is it in the file?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
The old-fashioned way.
Over here has all paving details, and they're exactly what Tom said they're supposed to.
I think, I actually discussed this at length, but then.
Oh, here.
I mean, talk to him and see, see what he needs. But basically, it's sort of more of just a standard detail, like it mentions RCA base and things like that, where it really is all supposed to be asphalt, I believe, based on the narrative, so. I think that the key was a little misleading to it, but talk to him about it. It's not something we, would be.
Again, my limits, I'm not the engineer, but I, the idea, this was the engineer's, what they tend to do.
Sure.
And I think they are going to have the base with the asphalt on top.
Well, one of the, without getting into the issue, it shows asphalt as a base of RCA, but then one of them shows just RCA, which to my knowledge, you're not proposing that anywhere.
Right.
And it's not clearly labeled on the plan where certain materials are going to be.
It's going to have to be sufficient for all those trucks, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it makes sense to have the entirety of the.
Yeah, 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 right, we, it's not, like, we've had other, we've had other applications where we went from asphalt to gravel, had one a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And that this is not that kind of situation, because it's a truck yard, you know? And I suggest, I'm not defining it that way.
But we don't find RCA in a, in a groundwater.
Groundwater protection area.
Well. Just, I mean, just RCA, just RCA.
Yeah, that came up a while ago with RAP, which is like road scrapings.
Oh, okay.
RCA is generally usually clean, but yeah, that, that was the material that, that was brought up, and I forget the name of that application.
Yeah, I know what you mean, yeah.
LTV.
Was that it?
Yeah, it was the pods, it was the pods place, yeah, right?
Um.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, you're right.
No, no, no.
Yeah, it doesn't matter much, right?
I mean, actually, in the absence of having a building here, you know, and Tom mentions it in his memo, that you can't do groundwater protection policy 'cause it's for buildings. And if they're not proposing a building, it's not applicable. It is probably better as far as control of any contaminants within stormwater runoff to have asphalt that's being pitched directly to catch basins, which the applicants are proposing to put filters in them, which should, should help. And then the other thing I wanted to say too, and it's not in the memorandum, it's more of a question that the board should ask the applicants, but I don't see any areas designated for outdoor storage, if that is, you know, other than the vehicles, and then there's like three pieces of equipment, which they have illustrated on the plan. But if there's gonna be any material storage areas, any areas of storage for diesel, you know?
Ladders?
Hmm? Any, anything. You might wanna just ask the applicants what their.
Well, that's, that's actually a ques- a separate session that I have.
Yeah.
No, no, I, well, I think Eric's talking about equipment that they use in their businesses.
Right, well, anything, and any out, any areas of outdoor storage, nothing's illustrated right now. You might wanna ask them what they anticipate their needs are. If they don't need any such areas, you should have a notation on the plan that says no outdoor storage.
Right, right, right.
If they do need it, they should come back with some kind of illustration of where those areas would be, preferably with like a concrete pad or something.
My, my question actually goes to whether or not there's any intention of repairing trucks that might be damaged, or that might need servicing.
The answer to both is my understanding, and they're here, they can confirm, is no to both of your questions.
Great.
Not material storage and not servicing.
And we can get a notation to that effect, so.
And generally, you might ask for a narrative about what's being, gonna be kept on site, making sure that chemicals are, is on outdoor storage, if the conditions gave you those fertilizers or other pesticides, or. And then you might want a covenant or a notation that, something, put something in your approval, but that's not permitted.
Yep, we, we, well, there's no material storage at all now, and, and it's a tree-cutting business. It's not a planting or fertilizing business.
Full disclosure, I use their services.
But, let me talk, the only, the, my only hesitation is, I don't know if they have something in the, they may have something in the back of the truck, that stays in the truck. But there's no materials, other, no area where there's anything that's gonna be stored.
It's all, it's all equipment that's attached to the truck or stored within bays within the truck, or holes within the truck.
That's right.
So, all right.
So we're talking about leaching, any possibility of leaching?
Well, that's always gonna be true anywhere, I mean, and, you know, they, they've never had an, doesn't.
You don't wanna back, you don't wanna to.
But, you know, but the, the point is, they're doing everything they can. They're, they're not gonna store anything, it's only.
The, the issue is whether or not they're gonna be like changing the oil in the truck.
No.
That's.
That's very clear.
That's, that's the kind of thing I'm concerned about.
In terms of the setbacks, I, I, I think there's a legal issue, which I'll be glad to speak to for a minute or two, about whether in, and everybody, you and we and everybody who are at the, below the bridge, and we and you are struggling with this because it's a kind of use that really isn't very well set out in the code, as, as we've talked about a number of times. So I don't know, it doesn't look like an accessory structure, because there's no principal structure, for example. There's no building, all right? The setbacks only apply to accessory structures. A driveway is a structure in the definition of a structure. I don't know if it's an accessory structure. But more importantly, it's 255-1171, says interpretation of setbacks, and it says, "No such provision, that is, no such setback shall be deemed to prohibit, prohibit the otherwise lawful parking or storage of cars and boats in required yards." I don't know quite how that applies to that. Again, this is a sort of a gray area. Mostly, I think, what they're asking for is very reasonable in terms of relaxing the, the setbacks on the front yard. This line is, is the quote-unquote required setback.
Just, you just use the word structure, just, there's no lavatory facilities.
No. And, and they, they do, they, they have been storing the trucks across the way in Bistry and things, and it's never been an issue, so, there is no lavatory.
Because that, that came up with below the bridge.
Yes, I understand, yeah. So, if you're inclined to be okay about relaxing the setbacks here, I'll stop trying to sound like a lawyer.
Eric, no, you can't do that.
Isn't that for residential, the boat and the, boat and vehicles in the yard?
Well, that's sort of what it sounds like, that's what I'm saying. But it's not in the residential section. It's a provision that on its face applies everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yeah, so, I, I agree. That's why I'm saying it's a grayish area, nobody really thought of this specific kind of use.
I don't know, can we waive setbacks and?
You can relax.
Yes.
Yes, we can, we can relax them.
Anything else?
But, short of giving me a nice litigation, I think it would have just dealt with the setbacks.
So I have a question for you. I want to report, I'm a very happy customer of Mr. Quack and Bush and his company. But I do have to ask the question, how did this get to this stage without going through site plan review or getting a building permit prior to, to now? How did that sort of transpire? Was there some understanding that there was a, you know, from, you know, years ago, that there was some ready-to-build designation? I mean, how did that happen? I mean, there are a lot of great things in this proposal, but I just, I'm curious about the timing.
Well.
So I guess with all due respect.
That's a fair enough question, and the sort of wise guy answer, my, my being the wise guy, is the same way it happened at below the bridge. But they, I don't know the, the day by day of how they started, why they started using it. They were told a week ago saying, hey, you shouldn't be using it, and they didn't. And they've removed everything, and they're waiting on you.
So, but, but it wasn't being used.
That's not what this says in the.
What it says is that there's code violations.
And there was a stop work order, and that was violated.
Yeah, from May.
Yeah, and they stopped using it then. They hadn't, they were using it for a while, and then the town said, wait a second. I mean, the town attorney's office said, you shouldn't do that, and they didn't do that.
How long were they using it in violation? Well, not that you're conceding it was violation. How long was it being used? No, no, I know.
It was a residence, and then it switched to something else at some point.
I'm hesitating because I feel so strongly that should not be part of your decision-making. And I know the curiosity.
Hey, I understand what you're saying, because that's what, that's before the justice court, and it's for their determination, not.
But I, but nevertheless, I will give you the answer. When did you, may I talk to them and?
Sure, sure.
So, the, the short answer is, when the applicants were looking to purchase the property, they went and met with the building inspector and were told that they could, once they closed, all they needed to get was a building permit, and they can go cut the trees down. So one of them being in the tree-cutting business took that at face value, and as they closed, I think literally the next day, was cutting trees.
Without the building permit?
Well, once they were told then, a building permit couldn't be issued, you need to have site plan. So it was sort of, you know, the process had begun, then the stop-work order was served on the wrong parties, so they didn't actually get served with a stop-work order. Initially, it got served on the prior owner, and then the work had been done when the actual stop-work order got served on these applicants. At that point, sort of the damage has been done, so to speak, and here we are in the justice court. And here.
I, I think we need to be careful about not stepping on the toes of the justice court.
Agreed, I think that thing is important in background.
But it's important from us, yeah, absolutely, I agree.
And we are in the justice court, and we are dealing with the justice court, and when that stop-work order was actually served on the applicants, no further work was done.
Okay. Does go to our landscaping, what do, what do we wanna see to remediate the lack of the existing, the old cover? And whether or not what we're being shown here is adequate to, to screen from fireplace road? I think, I think that's really the, the current question.
And, and to provide some water filtration, you know, that, that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is in a spe- you know, this is in the Suffolk County Designated Pine Barrens in the South Fork Special Groundwater Protection Area. So the fact that it was clear-cut without, you know, I mean, it's, it's over, it's completely devoid. I was there this afternoon. It doesn't, there's no trees on it at all. There's nothing on it, it's just dirt.
Well, and, and, and we would actually, you know, take some umbrage with the, you know, the position that it was clear-cut, because what the aerial photographs don't show is a lot of his leaf litter and debris and garbage and metal and things that have been dumped there.
Sorry, the what, what is, what's, I didn't hear. No, I didn't, the first part of the sentence is something, oh, overhead aerial, is that what you said? Okay, I missed that.
Which the, you know, the position is taken that it was all clear-cut. That's not the case. The applicants removed a lot of litter and debris, which was leaf-covered, so it looks like it was trees from, from the aerials.
I see, but.
So it wasn't to the same extent as what it appears, once they remove the underbrush, the understory, and that's sort of the.
I understand, I understand you take issue with that. But the memo says roughly twenty percent, they were vacant and roughly twenty percent cleared of naturally occurring mixed deciduous woodland habitat. And then it was, now it's a hundred percent cleared. So that's really what I'm talking about.
Right, and I, and I say I disagree with that twenty percent calculation, it's because it's based strictly on aerial photographs and not on real-life, in the field work, and they can testify to some of the metal that was removed.
Thank you for sharing that.
Nobody's testifying.
Yes.
So here we are.
But.
Yeah, exactly.
Look, these are two local businesses trying to make way. There's no doubt they jumped before they should've, and they acted before they should've. And there's no ready excuse for that, except in terms of groundwater protection, you know, Eric just said that the best way to do that is to get the asphalt and the drainage and, and the filters, rather than, you know, having runoff possibly into, into other areas. Also, the, the seventy-five percent coverage is very important to them, because they need the space, and they've designed it to that, and that's what they're allowed to get. We're certainly happy to beef up and fine-tune the landscaping. But I think it would be, if I may suggest, inappropriate to say, well, you should take, take away that seventy-five percent and, and do more revegetating in an area where if this was entirely treed, they could come in and say, I wanna do the same plan, and have the right to have that amount of coverage. They're not seeking any variances, they just wanna do, do what they're allowed to do, under the code.
That's seventy-five cleared.
Yes, it's, it's slightly, this would be after all, that work.
And what they show is, yeah, it's got twenty-five percent, that's the, that's the permitted. But, but we do have to relax the setback in the front to accommodate this plan.
I got a question.
Oh, please, yeah.
What, what do you, what do you think of Steve Lynch's objection to the entrance?
I, I don't think it was an objection, I think it was, he said he would prefer this.
Oh, he would, that is my misunderstanding, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, that's what.
No, 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 it was his idea.
He would rather that weren't on fireplace.
But that's just, that, that Springs Fire Place is an emergency access?
Yes.
At the idea?
And, and the answer is, Eric asked the question of what an emergency is.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, there's, I mean.
If there's a fire, if there's, I mean, I, you know, it's, the idea was it would not be used, except for some reason.
Well, I guess if they had to, yeah, you had to evacuate those lots quickly, you would want more than one driveway, maybe that's what he means.
Well, what, who, who's asked for that? Is that the fire department, fire marshal?
No.
Steve.
Steve recommended that.
No, no, but I don't know why we need two.
But Steve recommended maintaining that second curb cut onto fireplace road as an emergency. That was his suggestion.
And it'll be cleared in asphalt?
It was his suggestion to more, to have this.
It exists already, I think.
Yes.
Into his highway department, for the, you know, for the general operation.
Yeah, I think, I think the idea is that they.
He suggested both things.
It, it exists, I think he said, don't use it, put a gate lock it, drive out here.
Yeah, it's there, don't use it, 'cause Springs Fire Place is such a.
Keeping it is the point, yeah.
There's also.
Maybe it's 'cause he locks the highway department yard or something, I don't know. I, I'd like to, anyway, I'd like to know more about why we need, it's, it's in your client's interest not to have part of their, their clearing allocation go to a second emergency entrance if we don't need it. I'd like to know why, why we need a second entrance there, and whether the fire marshal is satisfied with just the one through the highway department or not.
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
Because that would help.
Is that something we should send to Steve?
I think.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, the fire marshal, I think the fire.
They usually don't require multiple egress points.
Right.
As long as the, the access easement.
Especially if there's no buildings there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if Steve was just thinking of just an expeditious solution.
And it's already there, the point is, it's there, yeah.
Then I think what we're saying is, well, we think it's a better idea if we get rid of that and vegetate.
Yeah, from a, from a.
From the coverage, right. And the coverage issue.
You don't have to make a decision right this second, but that might be something that you might be on board with also, so.
Okay, well, think, and, and the one other thing I want to say is, there, there is, you haven't raised it, and perhaps I shouldn't be diving in, but there's no traffic issue, because most of these trucks have been kept across the street anyway, in Bistry and all, so it's the same.
Springs Fire Place, as we will get into very quickly, and not for very long, in a few minutes, is an issue that we are grappling with weekly, so. Who knows, you lose something? Does anyone have any other, Eric, did you have everything?
Yes, so we need to deal with landscaping. Do you want to talk to the highway superintendent about this?
We'll chew that over amongst ourselves.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, and, woo, no, sorry.
Thank you.
No, you pin-shitting for Sharon McCaw.
Okay, so, I have a lot of concerns about this being in the Suffolk, Pine Barrens and the Special Groundwater Protection Area, and the fact that it is, that mature oak trees, which are well, that, which well-drain the water and acts as filtration have been removed. And also that the old Pine Barrens, the Pine Baron standards for clearing is sixty-five percent clearing and thirty-five percent uncleared. So I think that that's something that we should be thinking about, especially as there's a request to relax that front yard setback. Let's see, what else do I have here? I think we should get the building inspector to, or, you know, you, you already agreed to the storage yard, right? We're not gonna go, you're gonna, yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Because this is, again, part of what we're dealing with here is setting a precedent for future applications, so we wanna be as thorough as we can and try to consider everything that we, we are responsible for. And I understand that the lots can't merge, although it, it's counterintuitive to me as a general principle of good planning to basically tie the larger of these lots. Is there any way to make that a whole picture? Can we get the whole thing on the screen? Jameson, would you mind? Thank you. That the larger portion of the, the larger lot of the two will be completely dependent access-wise on the northerly lot, right? Because that isn't, doesn't the, am I reading the property line right? Does it go right to that? Yeah, so, okay, so it's right to that. Pardon me? It all, this lot is already completely reliant on the second lot for access at, at the current curb cut.
And, and they're not technically relying if there's an easement in place.
Yeah.
Right, right, I understand, but, but the easement is essential, and, you know, the easement isn't in place. We're proposing the easement.
No, I know, but it has proposed.
No, but I was saying, so absent this easement.
Yeah.
Here's the lot line, the only way that this property can access the exit would be to.
To go on to the northerly property, yeah. Which, to my mind, is not a good planning principle, that you have to, you're dependent on your neighboring lot to get in and out of your lot. I, you know, call me crazy, but I just.
We don't want two curb cuts.
I understand, I'm just making the point. I understand, I'm just making the point.
Yeah.
And that the easement, which you may have said earlier, Eric, I'm not sure, but the easement that you're proposing has to, are you before the town board on this to...
They have, they, it's been drafted.
Okay.
They have indicated, I'm told they're positively...
Okay, because I had that, yeah, I have that down. The town board needs to grant the easement to permit that access point. So, yeah, I just, I have basic, kind of, it seems counterintuitive to me that there are two individual lots that are going to function as one. That's just a difficulty for me. So, I'm glad to see the drainage. I would urge you to take another look at the, this is an initial evaluation just for the public's, you know, this isn't, it's the, not the usual way the applicants come in to get our feedbacks. This is a different kind of a thing than an actual review. But I would encourage you to plant bigger trees. I'd like to see bigger oaks than the ones you're proposing. I think you're proposing eight to ten foot, I think they should be much bigger. And retain as much, well, replace, get some more natural vegetation in there because there's nothing left to help to filter that water there. And we'll need a narrative on, for the uses on the site. And if there are, understand that the trucks have, you know, cabinets with the machinery in them. My son used to cut trees, so I know how that works. But if there are to be any, you know, chainsaws, needle oil, they need gas, you know, there's, you've got to operate these things, some of them are electric, I get it. But, you know, there should be a, we need a narrative to know if there are going to be any, anything stored on the site. And if you're not going to be servicing the trucks on the site, we need to know that. And we would, to my mind, make that a condition of approval. And if you have need for outdoor storage, please indicate how you would do that and what groundwater protection you would provide for that. So, that's, you know, that's the first look, and I look forward to your resubmission. That's it.
Anybody else, do you have anything?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add to what Kathy said, but I think, you know, there are a couple of things. I think going through the questions, we'll kind of answer everything. But I want to point out, emphasize what Kathy said about narrative on uses and the potential of having a covenant of some kind that Joanne suggested earlier. That sort of limits, you know, what kind of materials can be stored there is going to wind up being...
Absolutely, I have no problem, no problem.
And I think we do, it wasn't in the list of questions, but we do need to, I think, pursue with both Steve Lynch and Dave Brown.
No, no, that came up tonight.
Yeah, exactly, it's another issue. Other than that...
Oh, and also the ARB, yeah, I forgot to mention that, for the fence.
Well, they're going to have to go before the ARB.
I know, but usually we make that a condition and I just, I have to mention it.
Ed, anything else?
Yeah, I appreciate the thorough job that Kathy did. So, I'll just pick out one of the points that she made, although I agree with everything. To me, what's important, but more important than any of the other points that Kathy made is the point she made about the revegetation. And I know we're not here tonight to litigate or debate what happened in the past, how it was cleared and why and all that. However, it was done. And I think if we're going to consider relaxing these setbacks, I myself would like to have some more comfort than what I see here in this plan with regard to how much is getting revegetated and with what type of vegetation. So, I think if you can improve that, as Kathy had suggested, that's what's important to me.
Thank you. Ian?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good plan, and I'm supportive. I think to Lou's last point, I do think we have to be careful not to be punitive. If you're, you know, this design meets current standards, you're not asking for relief on some of that stuff. I think we have to look at it on the face value. And if we want more, I mean, we're not actually at the point where we're talking about detailed landscape planning because I think this is just an initial review. You'll come back with a formal submission if you're satisfied. We can hash that out. But I do think we want to be careful to say, oh, you shouldn't have cut this down and now we ask for more than we otherwise would, which you're, you know, allowed by law. So, I'm supportive of the plan. I would like to hear from Steve Lynch formally to make sure that that access, I mean, obviously if you get the easement, he's going to be okay with it. But I can't quite visualize the space between Springs Fire Place and where the access coming out of this property meets his and make sure there's no conflict that it's far enough off of Springs Fire Place. I'm sure that Steve Lynch has looked at this.
Yes.
All I'm saying is it's pretty close to Springs Fire Place relative.
Here's the...
Yeah, that's, it's right there, yeah.
Right, what are you saying to this?
Yep, that's it.
No, I get that, I'm talking about when you go on to, so plenty, plenty of room for a truck to get out and clear the lane, you know.
You've got to take down some nice trees to do it, too.
You go across, this is town property.
My only point is that generally the farther off of the main thoroughfare that is, the more room there is. I'm sure that it's fine, I'm just bringing it up as doing my due diligence in the initial evaluation.
It should be in the file, you're right, yeah.
You use, the business uses long trucks, right?
That's what I'm getting at, is that I don't want...
Well, they're not, no.
How long is your...
Well, if you go back to that plan...
I think we want to have Tom Townish look at this.
I knew you were going there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
He has, he has done, yeah.
Okay.
He has, yeah.
These are the actual trucks. There's one very big one, most of them are much smaller, or smaller, so.
How big is big?
I don't anticipate a problem, I just, you know, I think the point of this is to give as much feedback as we can so you guys know what to expect on your side.
That's a good point.
Can I point out two things?
Let him be on the record.
How long is, how big is the biggest truck?
Let him memorialize that, he's okay with it.
Yeah, or truck, how big is the biggest truck they use?
Well, I just make two points.
All right, please.
Can you go back to the area?
Sure.
The setback, the easement would come out at the property line with the highway department, a fifty-foot setback from the property line. And then you have an additional about twenty feet to the edge of pavement here. So, from where they come out over here, you'd have about seventy feet from that intersection. But Tom Townish already said in his comments that he wants a full detail of the common driveway and that something that would be included in there would be the edge, existing edge of pavement and turning radius.
It just matters because if the highway department has trucks queuing up and someone's trying to come out your block, I'm sure that it's fine, it's just an issue that we'll consider.
I'm just saying they haven't actually supplied that information that would prove that that's correct and Tom Townish has asked for it, so.
Great, otherwise I'm supportive of the application.
Randy, thank you, Randy?
I pretty much agree with Kathy's comments. I guess the discretionary thing, Ian, is that we would be waiving the front yard setbacks, which I'm okay with. If we could pull up that landscaping plan, I'm not really sure why we're landscaping between this property and the highway department or this property and below the bridge. I'd rather see that landscaping up on Fireplace Road. That's where most of the...
Impacts of...
There's not a lot on below the bridge, though, I mean, if you look at it.
No, you're right, but it's like...
I take his point, it could be, you could push it back and put more in the front.
I don't know if it gives you more utility down there, but on the aerial, that town-owned piece between this property and the highway department has vegetation on it.
Yeah.
So, I don't know that we need to screen that.
You know, the thing is, if you put, if you move that, are you suggesting moving that portion of the screening? Because I think you're going to end up narrowing the size of the parking.
That's the problem is...
And that's, I don't know what, to what benefit.
Well, I guess what I'm really looking for is more, more along Fireplace. And I would, I would like to see it Pine Barrens species. That's what we want, we want lower, no maintenance.
That's not a problem.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not a big Aubrey Vitae fan. Deer food, in my experience. But that's, but that's an issue that you'll deal with down the road.
Wherever the planning department, as far as the Pine Baron species that are lower, no maintenance and provide enough screening, that's pretty much it. I don't have a problem with the layout otherwise. The black mesh fencing, I'll leave that to the ARB. But, you know, we have, we have these grouping strings now that is very, and the town board is going to do a study and we're going to talk about trying to keep the green space along Fireplace and make it look, make it look good. So, that to me is the main thing, the access onto Fireplace and the buffer along Fireplace.
Could we go back to... I just want to point out that the fence is on inside, along Fireplace.
You want me to...
Could you lift that up to see the bottom of it?
What's the scale on, one inch equals thirty? So, that screening right now is about...
It goes from thirty to fifty.
Thirty, so thirty feet.
That's pretty good.
Thirty feet, depends on how densely it's planted.
Let's, let's...
Go ahead. All done, no, I'm done.
All right, does anybody else have anything? Because I think we should, it's getting a little late, so.
Yeah.
Does the board wish to seek a determination with the building inspector as to the appropriate use designation?
Yes.
I think so.
Well, if you want to call it a storage yard, it's fine.
Yeah, well, okay.
Is that done?
I mean, does it, does it change? Yeah, no, that's the town, yeah.
Well...
So, we need a narrative.
If I had applied it as a storage yard, would you say I have to go back and see whether it's a truck terminal?
No, you might have asked whether the building department thought it was a storage yard.
And don't you need the narrative, Joanne? If you get the narrative before we go to the building inspector.
Let's just get the determination.
Well, what do we call below the bridge? Because it's a pretty...
No, below the bridge, that's, that's the problem, below the bridge, is it doesn't have, it's a different thing. Below the bridge is rented out space. This is space for use by the applicant.
Right, right.
So, let's, we'll look at the narrative, get to the building department, and we'll get, just give it the right name, that's all.
It's fine, it's just we don't care.
Good.
I think Eric's suggestion...
Yeah, no, it's good that they don't care, that way we can do what we need to do and...
Eric's suggestion probably helped you, right?
Yes.
A rose by any other name.
Yeah, right. Does the board wish to seek a determination with the building inspector and their counsel as to whether the lots require merger or if they can remain a single and separate?
I think we...
I, I'm speaking by myself, I'm comforted by everything that's been described, particularly the covenants that have been written in by the applicant's private counsel. But it would still be a good idea for us to get the towns in primature, whether it's the building inspector or the town attorney, I would, I'm not, that it's...
It's okay, in primatur for what?
That we can use these, that it doesn't require a merger. I mean, I, look, I don't see that you can merge it because my analysis is they're both separate LLCs. That's the end of the merger question. But, well, let me put that...
Separate from the site plan issue, I think our question to Jameson is just, is it okay to proceed with the way that they're proposing? To build, you know, one site over two grounds?
But I'm not going to answer that right here, only because I don't, I haven't even seen a survey besides just right now.
So, the answer, so the answer is that we should get it if needed, and it'll go in the envelope and in the application, right?
It should be in the file, it should be in the file.
That's all, that's all, that's all, not tying, not tying it up. All right, is the layout, quantity and layout of the parking acceptable? I think that's one thing we do agree on all around, which is the heart of the whole thing. Is the proposed chain link fence acceptable? And on that, I'd say we should toss it to the ARB.
They're not...
Should the, I'm sorry, Jameson?
They traditionally do not accept chain link fences.
And that's why it's their determination that hours...
Well, we would recommend you reconsider because they don't like chain link, but, yeah.
It's, again, I think it's best because it's least, we think it's best because it's least visible because of the black stuff.
Right, I got it.
You'll take that up with you?
Mercifully, that's not our department.
But we don't care, if they wanted to be a stockade fence, it'd be a stockade fence.
Should the landscaping plan be amended as noted above? I think we're waiting for a more comprehensive landscaping plan, is that accurate?
Yes, yes.
But generally, we want more material and Pine Barrens species.
Pine-friendly and, and speaking by myself, fewer Aubrey Vitae. And should a site plan including all necessary elements be submitted? Well, I guess that's one of our standard, yes. Anything else that we want to add, folks?
Narrative on uses that Kathy...
Narrative on use, okay, well, that kind of goes to the, that goes to the question about getting counsel.
But honestly, we're not going to see, the new application is submitted, right? This is initial review?
Yes.
So, it's a one-time thing?
Yeah.
So, we're just telling you what we're going to expect during the...
Yeah, we need the narrative, we need the narrative about uses and also about...
Is that a...
Oh, it's not, okay, 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 okay.
It's initial...
But it's, it's an initial, and we do need the narrative with respect to the uses and whether there'll be containers on site and what will be maintained on site so that we can decide whether there should be no outdoor storage or if there is going to be storage. That's a really important piece of this, which you understand, right?
Well, I can, sure, I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm also telling you that the answer to that is no, and we're willing to put that in the covenant. There isn't any outdoor storage.
Right, generally, generally, applicants will submit a narrative that just, it's just for the file.
It's just going to be...
Doesn't have to be, you know...
Worked or accurate, that's all it really boils down to.
That's all, we just want to be able to look back and say, this is what we were told and this is how it is. And that's our understanding.
My assumption, please tell me if I'm mistaken, my assumption is that you're going to see these covenants before there's any site plan approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're asking for, so that we can say, okay, we...
No, I mean, you see the actual covenant.
So, are you implying that one of the covenants would be no outdoor storage? I mean, okay, all right, that'd be great.
We want to talk to both Steve Lynch and David Brown?
Well, that's actually a good question, should we talk to Steve or Dave or who above? You'll take care of that, you'll get us something on that?
That'd be great.
All right, and then let the applicant know because, I mean, it's a few more trees for you to get, but it also improves the site.
Yeah, it helps with the coverage, yeah, exactly, it helps with the stuff we're concerned about.
Good, all right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming out, thanks for staying through to the nearly bitter end, so.
You kept us through the rainstorm.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Kept us through the rainstorms.
Is the rain over?
No, maybe it's, yeah, right. I think that's what's blowing the doors.
We have nine, it's nine thirty-eight, we've got one more, what I expect to be a relatively painless application.
Yes, I hope so.
Okay.
I'm going to put this on the table because I scanned this, my computer went dark and I can't save it in English.
It's always good.
This is what we're looking for. Something going on on the atmosphere today.
You are tired, hard to hear.
Jody, it's gotten very cool in here. Is that just the storm or did you...
She wants us to hurry up.
Yeah, right, Jody's got the air conditioning way up on her.
Here, take mine.
Okay.
Yes.
Lou, this is yours, right?
The applicant submitted revised site plan that depicts the trash receptacles in a central location. Before, there was a question about relaxing the setbacks and they were over near the property line. The applicant has moved them between the buildings. Those two small areas that are trash receptacle areas, that's the area where the dumpster was originally proposed. This is much less intrusive. They've raised the height of the fence surrounding them to four feet. And then they put all the elements of the site plan on one plan. Before, this was called a landscaping plan, now this is really a site plan that has all the information on it. The only thing that I saw was that the key, although the key appears to indicate that the proposed lighting complies with the board's lighting policy and the town code... although the key appears to indicate that the proposed lighting complies with the board's lighting policy in the town code, it doesn't give us the Kelvin levels of the light. And we haven't received manufacturer's specification sheets, which back up the information in the key. So, once they submit that information, we would say the modification is complete. And we had discussed having a public hearing on this. Now that they've moved the trash receptacles, you may want to reconsider that, so.
What is to the immediate right, well, to my right, anyway? Where's the nearest neighbor is your question?
The nearest what?
The nearest neighbor.
Nearest neighbor is over there.
Yeah, it's on top. I know there's one on the north side.
And this is the water.
That's all water, okay.
So, unless the fish come in, there wouldn't be anybody in a public hearing.
Well, it was originally approved in that site there, yeah, just so, yeah.
Look, the issue is, is public hearing, and, like I said, fish aren't coming in.
The neighbor and Sam, if you look at the, there's, there really aren't any...
So, the trash receptacles will go right in here. They were proposed right over here.
Oh, they were, they were there. That's where they are, yeah.
No, they're in the middle. They're blocked by their own buildings, so...
But they have a great water view.
They sure do. And Randy, if you want to have, you want to put a post thing up on the...
I would do a summer rattle in there.
All right. Anybody, Lou, this is yours. Do you have anything first?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's fine where... Is four feet where, I just have a question about the four feet height of the enclosure. Didn't we, is that what we said they were going to be?
We asked for four feet, and we weren't so sure that what they provided was four feet, even though it was hard to tell because all the garbage was sort of heaped up on it, the last photograph that we saw, which I think you took...
It didn't appear from being out there that what was there is four feet.
Oh, that's when we took the picture on like Sunday night after a weekend of...
It was a regular weekend.
Yeah, right, yeah.
No, but I think that they proposed three feet. We asked for four feet. I said, okay, I just don't know if it's been done yet.
Right, yeah, yeah, well, yes. But that's to answer his question, yeah.
Well, actually, so that goes really to the first question, should, is the revised plant proposal for the trash receptacles acceptable? And I guess the answer is where they are is fine.
But they're proposing four feet.
But they need to be four feet high.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they are going to be for.
They are proposing, yeah.
They have to go to the ZBA.
For the garbage receptacles?
Yeah, aren't they in the NRSP jurisdiction?
No, it's for the...
They need to modify their ZBA approval in terms of revegetation and a couple of other things, so if I...
I believe that the 150-foot line does fall in that area, so...
Oh, really?
They may need to modify their...
Yeah, I'm fine with the application as it is. I think Joanne's right. They need to complete it regarding the lighting plan, but other than that, if they want to put the trash cans there, I personally would have preferred that they kept it where it was and made it longer. Because I took a look, I went by there, and it's a nicely manicured, vegetated area. There's trees along the side. They're going to put these garbage cans now in front of these trees on both sides. It's going to ruin that whole look, but it's an aesthetic thing, so, you know, I don't think it's something that we can opine on.
Well, the other thing was that the current location needed a setback variance. And that, we didn't, they weren't within the setbacks, and we weren't comfortable relaxing the setbacks without a public hearing.
But I thought we had a solution to that, that they were going to make it narrower so it met the setback, but make it longer so that they could fit...
Well, they asked us if they could make it compliant, would that, would that...
Apparently, that was probably no.
We said yes, so this is what they chose to do rather than that. I mean, I agree with you, but if this is what they've submitted...
Yeah, that's fine.
It's better for the neighbor. I mean, that...
Well, yeah, that's the point. It's better, and once you do that, then we get to the issue of, in my opinion, we get to the, we obviates the need for a public hearing.
Yeah, I guess this is the best option, so, okay.
That is the rim. Okay, so, folks, does the revised proposal for the trash receptacles acceptable?
Yes.
Agreed?
Yes.
And the applicant should submit additional information regarding the lighting?
Yes, yes.
And waive public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, one, two, three. All right, now...
Does the applicant want to speak?
Oh, I, no, no, Carl's not here on that.
Oh, he's not?
He's here on something else, which will be the next thing on our plate. All right, so we've gone through the work session.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Help yourself.
And now we will, very rapidly, well, I guess this is on others, so it's still in the work session. All right, we have, we, no, we got to do with the draft fire...
Okay, of course.
Now, I don't know if you, at the beginning of the meeting, we talked about the fact that the draft Springs Fireplace car to study draft proposal is on our agenda. Do you want to just give us a one, two, three update on what we're looking at? And basically, I think the plan is going to be to come back next week for us to talk about it at some length.
Have a detailed discussion, yeah.
And all of us have, will have, by then, have had the opportunity to review this. Randy, I know, has already, as I mentioned earlier, taken the full butter horned on this, but we'll all do that.
Is that kind of...
Yeah, this was prepared by, basically by Lisa Lacory of Fine Arts and Science, who's working with Dodson and Flinker and McLean Associates as an extension really of the Hamlet studies. They're going to do the traffic study corridor, Springs Fireplace Road corridor study that was recommended by the planning board. She presented this to the town board yesterday, and they have also asked for your input, since it was, for one reason, it came from, recommendation came from you, so you should review it. And we'll put together comments and forward them back to the town board for their consideration into whether or not they're going to include them. There is a little bit of a caveat about how much, we should be aware of how much expense, what you're, anything that you're going to add to the project would be. So, the town board is already, town board members have already suggested that there be non-conforming uses be looked at, that zoning changes be looked at, that, 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 you know, that the existing zoning changes be addressed. And I know that the applicant hadn't included those in their initial costs that went to the town board, so those things are going to have to be considered. The board's going to have to discuss whether there's financial resources to cover all those recommendations.
And all we, but what we've got here now is a scope.
It's scoping, that's right.
So, ultimately, there'll be a more fulsome proposal.
And the applicant's going to come, yeah, once the scope is developed, they'll start coming back to you and, back to the town board, and I imagine to you with different sections of it. This is the inventory. Then they'll get to the transportation analysis, and the different sections will come back to you for comment, further comment.
Did anyone have any questions for Joanne on this before, because we've been, like I said, we're at home now, and we'll come back next week.
Yeah, the town board understood that you would probably need two work sessions to discuss it. The one to introduce it and another one to discuss it and get, agree on the comments that you're going to provide.
Joanne, I got one question from a member of the public. She references a list of site plans that we, remember when you did your letter?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
And they just asked if, because it's not attached to her proposal, but she mentions the list of like sixteen sites.
And the town, one town board member asked that that list be updated, because some of them have been approved and other ones are new ones that have come in that are not on that list. So, we, the planning department will be, will be providing that.
Okay, whenever you get it, if you circulate it.
That's great, that's good.
Okay, now, just so that, to remind what was stated earlier is that going forward, we'll accept comments from council at work sessions, which hadn't been the policy previously. This, I guess, this is not a work session item. Well, it is, because it's on the work session side of the agenda. So, we'll permit the public to speak and ask, and that includes council, and we'll ask that those comments be limited to two minutes. So, if there's any member of the public or council who may wish to speak, let me turn on my stopwatch.
Oh, boy, you're really being timed.
Hey, listen, it's under two.
Go for it.
Thanks, I know it's late, so thanks again for allowing me the opportunity. I'm here to ask for the corridor study to include baseline traffic studies, counts, and intersection analyses. The proposed study has to include those things, because they're so essential to help the board evaluate the cumulative impacts of traffic on this corridor. Currently, there are proposals and applications for numerous sites along Springs Fireplace Road, including four in a row near the recycling center. This study will give the board a baseline to use in reviewing cumulative impacts of these and other future applications. Currently, the board relies upon applicants to submit traffic data, which are compiled for the purpose of advocating their application. Sometimes these submissions use traffic counts from several years ago. They fail to submit data from adjacent roadways, where they base traffic counts on data collected from known low-volume periods like President's Week Vacation. Traffic reports like these, with these types of deficiencies hardly seem like the ones that the board can rationally rely upon. That's why I think it's so important that the study gives us something that we can use, so we have a comparison. I mean, just to compare some studies that the board has seen, there are two adjacent sites I feel are illustrative. One traffic study submitted by a private applicant is eight pages total. And by contrast, the traffic study from a municipal entity was thirty-two pages plus seventy pages of appendices. The private applicant said that the intersection of Ohio Avenue and Springs Fireplace Road averages seventy-two percent right-hand turns and twenty-eight lefts during afternoon hours, but the municipal school bus depot submitted data from the same time of day where it was almost exactly fifty-fifty. The bus depot study reports the bus depot alone creates a reduction in the level of service at the intersection of Springs Fireplace in Ohio, which is a downgrade from a Level B to a C. The private applicant didn't evaluate that intersection at all. Is that two?
That's ten seconds.
The bus depot also submitted calculations for Springs Fireplace Road in North Maine that the bus depot alone, without any cumulative analysis, would increase delays from fifty-eight seconds to one hundred and eighteen seconds. That's double. Accurate reflections of these changes in level of service are critical, because that can make a difference between a Type 1 and unlisted action.
That's it? Finish your sentence.
Moratorium, if you can include that request.
Did you give us copies?
Yeah, a written submission is always the best, but, yeah, if you want to consider...
And Joanne, really, people considering the scope town board.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for hearing my comments, and thanks for proposing this. I think it's really going to be helpful.
We do, too.
Okay.
Thanks, Carl.
Thanks, and I've got room under my umbrella for one more.
My umbrella is...
If I were you, I'd make a mad dash for the car. All right, folks, we have a, we are now done with the work session. We'll quickly go through the three items that are on the, on the regular meeting. We have a, we have a broader review. Town engineer has brought a broader review for us on Jeffrey Esposito, Old Barn Development Corporation for building permit on premises located at fifteen Walton Street in Springs. Map four fifty-five, block forty-two, lots fourteen to twenty-one. Urban renewal parcel one forty-one in SP Springs one dash two. Suffolk County Tax map three hundred dash fifty-eight dash nine dash five point three. The undertaking is in the something twelve thousand dollars. I think everybody moved for its approval of this broader review.
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cast and carry. Next is the Verizon Wireless at Wayne Scott Northwest Road approval. Kathy, this is your...
In the matter of the application of Verizon Wireless at Wayne Scott Northwest Road, site plan special permit personal wireless service facility, Suffolk County Tax map number three hundred dash one eight zero dash one eight point five for a site plan special permit approval. I've read the resolution and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And...
How about those minutes?
Oh, the joint, did you have anyone to add just now? How about those minutes?
They're so great. I've moved to adopt them.
Second to that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I get a resolution at nine fifty-five P.M.
Motion to adjourn?
There are second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.